I will start us off. This is six forty-six. This is a meeting of the Town of Hingham's Planning Board. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting are being recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If anyone wishes to record this meeting, please notify me now in accordance with MasterCard Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty F, so that I, as Chair, may inform all other participants of said recording. Hearing none, we can proceed. I, as I said, I'm the Chair, Judy Sneath. I'm joined, and we'll take a roll call vote by Gary Tonner-Dick.
Here.
Kevin Ellis.
Here.
Gordon Carr.
Here.
And Rita De Silva.
Yeah.
And we are also joined by Mike Silveira, our staff in the Planning Board office. Mike Mercurio is here tonight because the first, oh, Mike Mercurio is here tonight.
Hi, President.
Thank you for that, because the first item on our agenda, one eighty-one North Street, an application that we have heard before. My colleague Gordon Carr is recused from this, and so Mike Mercurio is.
I'm also recused, Judy.
Oh, I'm sorry, and Gary Tonner-Duck is also recused. So if the two of you wish to just step back for one moment, I will open the hearing of one eighty-one North Street. Hingham Historical Society filed an application to modify site plan approval and special permit A three parking determination. Both originally issued December fourth, two thousand and twenty, under section one I and five A of zoning bylaw, such other relief as necessary to relocate an accessible parking space and walkway, eliminate one parking space and make other really related improvements. This, the application requested that we continue this hearing to February sixth. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, they, so I will, this is a motion for both special permit A three and special and site plan review. I would entertain a motion to continue the applications of the Hingham Historical Society to modify a special plot, a site plan approval and special permit A three parking determination. Both originally issued December four, two thousand and twenty, under section one I and five A of the zoning bylaw, bylaw, and such other relief as necessary to relocate an accessible parking space and walkway, eliminate one parking space, and make other related improvements at one eighty-one North Street Residence District A to February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six forty-five. Yeah. Is there a motion?
So move you.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rita. All those in favor, Rita?
Hi.
Mike Mercurio?
I'm looking at my calendar.
Uh-oh.
My apologies.
No, no apologies necessary.
I'll make it work. I.
Thank you. I am sorry about that. I thought we had worked that out. And Kevin Ellis?
Hi.
And I am an I as well. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mike, for making that work, and we'll see you on the sixth.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. The next item on our agenda is at seven o'clock, and it's now six fifty. So we are going to take a break for ten minutes. Because, yeah, because we advertised the conversation about accessory dwelling units for seven o'clock. So Mike, we don't have to do anything procedurally, wait till seven, do we? Nope. Okay, so we are taking a break.
Okay.
Starting now, and I'll see you at six fifty-nine. Okay. Thank you for returning to the meeting of the Planning Board that was opened a little bit earlier. The next item on our agenda, as I said, is a discussion of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment allow to allowing detached accessory dwelling units and adopting. Well, I'm going to let Kevin Ellis is go is the person on the Planning Board who is leading the hearings on this particular zoning amendment, so I will let him open this and take it from here. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Judy. So just going to call to order open to any further discussion. First is zoning articles for accessory dwelling units, and the second is also zoning articles
Okay, sorry.
for minimum occupancy term residential uses. So I see there's thirty-three people on the call, and I keep people chiming in, so I'm just going to spend a couple of minutes going over how I'd like to see this move forward. Then I'm going to call Mike Silveira to give us a very brief kind of overview of how we got here and where we are and some of the items that we might need to discuss. Then I'll call on my peers on the board to talk a bit about some of their questions, some of their concerns, and I think that framework will guide our discussion for members of the public who don't normally join us. First, welcome, and thank you for attending. I will certainly open this up to public discussion to the extent that anybody would like to make a comment. Depending on the number of people on the call, we might then make comments to, you know, three minutes or so each, just so we can everyone a chance to talk. We should state from the outset, this will not be our only hearing on this topic. I anticipate that we're going to meet next week at the same time to talk about this, and based on that discussion, we'll set another, if necessary, we'll set another meeting time indeed to talk about this. So if you don't have an opportunity to speak tonight, you will certainly be invited to and have an opportunity to speak in the future. So the Planning Board has spent some time discussing this to bring this, you know, these two zoning articles kind of in front of the board. My goal tonight really is to flesh out what our overriding questions are, what overriding concerns are, and try to get a sense of what moving forward might look like. And we're not going to take a vote tonight. We're not going to make any final determinations. But I'd like to kind of set this in motion so that we know what we're looking to accomplish as a board. For instance, you know, one of the big topics is familial restrictions on A D U's. If those are something the board is not likely to approve, then I want to get a sense of if we're not likely to move forward. Is there still interest in moving forward this bylaw? What might that look like? To try and narrow down the topics that are open and move this conversation forward. I'm going to ask my colleagues on the board to talk for just, you know, three or four minutes each about some of their questions and concerns. I asked them prior to this meeting to submit those questions and concerns in writing, so I could just organize my thoughts. Michael, are those going to be posted to the public to take a look at, or is that something that, you know, they're kind of just informal notes from board members?
They certainly can be, if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm happy to have them posted. If it's okay with my colleagues, you know, so we can get a sense of some of the questions and topics, concerns that the board has and looking for more information on. I have those, so you don't need to speak to me in rehashing those, but maybe you can highlight some of the overarching themes in your emails and statements to me, just so we can get a sense for the public's sake of what we're looking to talk about and what some of the, you know, some of the topics that the board wants to discuss further are. Unfortunately, Jen Gay Smith, who led very admirably the ADU Study Committee, is not able to join us tonight, and I know there are other members of that study committee on this call. We might call on some of those members of the study committee tonight, in particular, to ask some procedural questions, maybe how they reached conclusions, what the discussion was like, you know, what they went through as a committee. I hesitate to call on any members of the ADU Study Committee to speak with the committee. I think that's Jen's role, so I'll hold off on doing so. That said, you are members of the public, and you're certainly more than welcome to voice your, you know, your thoughts and your opinions as well. So with that, I think I'm going to open up to my colleagues on the board and in no particular order, like I said, I just, for saving members of the public, for your other colleagues on the board who haven't seen these questions and comments, kind of three or four minutes at a high level, we're hoping to do. I think the discussion tonight is scheduled to be an hour. I'd like to try to hold it to that, because we do have a pretty full agenda. So with that, Gordon, do you want to go ahead and start?
Sure, thank you, and thank you, everybody, for participating. So just to recap a bit on some of the comments that I had made when we were discussing this in October, November, whenever it was. I'm I'm generally pretty cautious about making changes to the zoning bylaw related to issues like this. And I think what would be most helpful to understand from the committee is, well, so the reports that we received.
Hold on one second. Get some feedback. Mr. Luce, do you mind? You saw the feedbacks coming through your screen on my end, at least. Michael, can you go ahead and do that for us? Thank you. Gordon, sorry, please go ahead.
It's all right. Was, you know, the information that showed that there are some of these ADU bylaws in benchmark communities with that don't have the familial restriction, right? And while helpful, that's, that's kind of part of the story. I'd love to know what those, what the experiences of those towns have been, how long have they had those bylaws, what have they seen particularly related to the goals that have been articulated by the committee and by others for this change, right? This, the concept of of creating a new stock of less expensive housing and also finding mechanisms for seniors and empty nesters to generate revenue and stay in their, in their house. And I just wanted, it would be helpful to see whether that has transpired in some of those, those communities and to what, what degree. So I think that would be helpful. It would be interesting, I think, of those other, whatever other benchmark communities that we, that we hold ourselves against, that may not have them, and if not, why not? I mean, the that may not have or may have the familial restrictions still with detached ADU. So just some context on, you know, what those peer communities have seen would be really helpful for us to understand, because as I've expressed, I'm skeptical that that this will achieve those goals. I'm very skeptical that they're the best mechanism to achieve those goals. And that I think there are some, some others that we ought to be spending our energy on that would be much more effective and efficient in generating a diverse housing stock and finding ways for seniors to stay in their homes. But this is what's before us. So understanding what that experience has been would be very helpful. And then related, the report suggested a sixty-day minimum rental, but we've learned since that the only thing we can include is a thirty-day minimum rental, which is very short, in my opinion, and troubling, and whether the committee has any suggestions on how we might be able to work around that, because I think a thirty-day rental is not the intent of what the committee had wanted to do, or many of the supporters of the change had wanted. And that, you know, more like a six-month or so, you know, rental period is what we're envisioning. So those are the big ones, I think, Kevin, that would be helpful for me. I probably went over, but that's my.
Thank you very much, Gordon. Of course. Judy, you're next. Gordon, on my screen, do you want to go ahead, or?
I'm sure. I
Thank you.
I neglected to send my questions. I apologize. I don't know how that slipped my mind. I welcome this conversation. I'm so glad we're here, and I, my questions really surround enforcement. I think that this one approach is part of what needs to be a multi-pronged approach to a diverse housing stock in Hingham. We started with accessory dwelling units in primary residences, and this is extending that into accessory structures. We already have rentals throughout the town. We have enormous rental buildings on three A and Beale Street. They all have thirty-day, those two buildings have thirty-day minimum rentals. So we're living with that. We have experience with it. I think we need to, as part of this process, look at what we already have in town. We have renters. We have, we have not permitted accessory dwelling units in accessory buildings. Just the other day, someone said to me, oh, my daughter's home. She's staying in that apartment. We put in our, in our, the little building out back. I'm like, oh, you did, huh? So it's, it's everywhere, and it's time for the town, I think, to get a handle on that. And actually, somebody pointed out on one of the discussion groups that we have on, going on this on Facebook. This would be tax revenue for the town if we are properly assessing properties that already have apartments in them. This is a small step, as Gordon points out. It's not going to solve the entire equation of how we kind of get a handle on our desire, our stated desire for a diverse housing stock, but it's one step. And so I would like to know more about enforcement. How, so if we have this thirty-day thing, you know, in the two apartment buildings on Beale Street, there's an administrator. They enforce the thirty days. We wouldn't have that in private homes. So how does the building commissioner enforce lengths of stay? Right now, I've seen houses in Hingham listed on Airbnb, and it doesn't say thirty-day minimum. So how, what is the enforcement mechanism? The other thing that occurs to me is that once this apartment is built, and say it's vacant for whatever reason, the property owner decides not to use it anymore as a rental unit, does it become kind of their kids' hangout, and does that present different problems for the abutters that maybe people are already experiencing, whether it's an apartment or not? So that's something interesting also. So I'd really like to hear from people in town about what their experiences have been about accessory buildings that are being used for any number of purposes, and from the building commissioner about how this type of dwelling unit would be monitored going into the future, especially if we decide that it, that we will not lift the family cap. Only family members can live there. The homeowner loses all their additional family members. Do they have to rip out that apartment? Because they can't use it anymore, because only a family member can live there. So how do we enforce that? So, okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Very helpful. Gary, you ready?
Yes, thank you, Kevin. Appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts to the board and to the community. My concerns that I'd like to have addressed going forward are about zoning and about the impact of A use. And so, for example, if one looks at, we currently have an accessory dwelling unit in the primary residence for familial occupancy. The bylaw, the proposal is to expand that into an accessory building, whether new or existing. And the proposal is also to decide whether it's familial occupancy or whether it's expanded to a rental occupancy. So I'm looking at this, if I'm looking at the typical accessory building, it's a passive use right now, if it doesn't have a residence in it. Use for car storage, yard tool, tractor, what have you, storage, but it's fundamentally passive. It's dark at night. It's only used really during the morning or during the day. If we introduce a residential, residential activity into an accessory building, now what we've done is we've increased the intensity of use in that building. And then I'm interested in, as I see one of the tenants of zoning is one is to regulate and or mitigate incompatible uses or intensity of uses, and then the other is to zoning, I think, really exists to protect the abutters. And so I'm basically thinking, how does this work? You know, if you have a person, a resident of the town, that's that's, let's say they're a senior citizen, and let's say they have an outbuilding, and, and they have some family issues. They're either aging, or they'd like to have the kids live in the, on the property. I can understand that as a familial use, and I can understand, or I think I can wrap my hand around, my head around the implications and what we'd have to do in terms of regulations to make sure that the privacy of the neighbors in their backyard is respected and maintained. When I, when I look at the accessory dwelling unit for rental, I see so a different, a little bit more of an increased intensity of use, which might be a frequency of rentals. We're trying to establish a minimum duration. Tendency at will is typically thirty days plus one day. A lease is typically a year. If we have a bylaw that says thirty days, I think we need to talk about that. But what I see in, in the rental is an increased, increased turnover of occupancy. And so to me, that has a certain impact on the neighbors. Just, you know, activity coming and going, cars, parties, what have you. And I think it's very important to articulate better restrictions in this proposed bylaw for the abutters. I don't see that that's the case in researching peer towns. Peer towns are basically when they've entertained ADUs, whether familial or familial and rental, they have increased the regulations, not decreased them. And I think our proposal needs to address that and change. The other thing I'm looking at is just looking at the economics just for a minute. In order to put an ADU, make an ADU available, one has to actually build that, unless one has a two-family house that's already built. And that, and then today's market is about four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand for eight hundred and twenty-five square feet, based on contractor assessments. So I just look at a senior citizen on a fixed income who would want to have the opportunity of rental stream, help them afford, you know, defray their expenses, but all this has to be capitalized. And that has an expense and a cost, and we're not, we don't have any provisions in place to help defray that or subsidize it like Lincoln or Salem. So I'm thinking that also looking at the current state of play in terms of the rental market, I read a very interesting piece by the CEO of Airbnb, and basically what he is saying is that as of the last three months, they are basically changing course relative to their corporate mission, and they're going to be buying properties and having extended rental durations. And one of the things that I'm concerned about, and I'm trying to, you know, think this all through, about rentals, which are fundamentally commercial, and they will ride with the market in terms of cost and rent. You know, if we, right now, the Airbnb company has bought up a number of properties that they're using for short term, but those properties, a lot of them were part of the original rental pool. This is something that I think there are a number of ramifications that we really have to think through in terms of rental relative to the market and business and the legal aspects of having more expensive turnover. And I, and I go back to, I reread.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you've got five minutes. I just want to make sure everyone gets a chance to talk here.
I'm sorry, sorry, didn't go too far.
I would only say, just in closing, that I reread a number of the documents that were, were prepared by members of the study committee, and I reread Beth Rollu's memo, and I was very impressed with her focus on multi-generational and providing for family opportunities. And in looking this, I'm much more comfortable with staying with that kind of a familial, multi-generational and, and one step at a time, see how that works in an accessory building. And then we can talk about, you know, if that works well and the zoning issues are good, then we can talk about maybe doing a rental. But I think it's, at this point in time, I'm only comfortable with the familiar.
Thank you, Gary. Rita, sorry. Please go ahead.
No, no problem. So I'm going to kind of go over a little bit of my questions. So I had asked about what kind of data was used to go from familial to rental, and actually, when was it done? And also, the thirty days, I grew up with thirty days.
A little feedback in the eye.
Ah, I think it is. Okay, if I go a little, okay.
Yep.
Thanks. So I asked also also about the thirty-day rental, what was the purpose of it, what's the per town, is the town getting any back, what's the purpose for the, and the abutters, you know, the abutters will be affected.
Sorry, we're still getting feedback on our end.
And also, a few things are, is it really bad?
No, it's a little clearer now.
Yeah, sorry about that. So I also, hold on. And other towns like Norwell, there's other, other few towns have covenants on penalties that if people are not doing what they're supposed to be doing with these ADUs, what kind of penalties are we going to give? I mean, anyone, if there's nothing, there's no penalties, anything can, you know, anything can happen. So I would like to propose some type of a penalty or, you know, they have to follow the law and always, every year, send in their paperwork. And another thing is, if we're really going to make these, if we end up with the rental, and we really want to make these affordable, why can't we give maybe the owner a tax break to do less than market value on a rent? Because rent on a Hingham property and, you know, a dwell, you know, at someone's home is going to be much higher than if you were to rent at Beale, at Beale's Cove. So for me, if you can go a lower rent, why can't we do an incentive for the homeowner with some type of a tax break? That's that's where, that's, but that's what else to say. So that's, I want to get thirty days came from, and why, you know, so really, what was going for? I'd like to know from the, how did it turn familial to rental? And what is, you know, the reason and reason why, reason why?
Thank you, Rita. I'll only add to that a kind of a couple of topics that came up in some of the submittals and that I had asked about. I think there were some questions around assessment, and you know, what does ADU do to the assessment of your property, understanding that a bit, for better or worse. There are some dimensional questions that were raised, and that's more, you know, what we typically do, a bit of the honey party of setbacks and thinking about, you know, what direction a property might face, and what does driving look like? How is it accessed? You know, those might be secondary to the conversation here. I think some of these bigger issues, but there are questions that were raised and questions that were addressed in the study committee report. And a couple of other items that came up were we do have some questions around, kind of just navigating the rental market, introducing new renters to the market, you know, in in particular, at least the study committee suggests potential senior citizens. And, you know, have we considered what that would be like? Do we need any additional safeguards in place? Do we have any kind of tenant education, renter education that we want to suggest or think about in the context of kind of creating new landlords in town through this process, if we go with a non-familial requirement? Like, that was really everything that came up in the, in the written submission, more or less, and articulated by my colleagues. So with that, Mike Silveira, do you want to give us just a brief overview and for the board and for the public of kind of how we got here and where we are, and we can take your presentation, the board's comments, and we can kind of move forward in our discussion?
Sure. Do you want me to go through just briefly the, both of the articles, since they're kind of related, or?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Just give me one second. Okay. So this is the, the first article I'll go over. It's the minimum occupancy term for residential uses. Basically, one of the reasons why the Planning Board put this article forward is to adopt a minimum occupancy term for residential dwelling units, basically to prevent these short-term rentals. So this, this kind of goes hand in hand with the ADU article. It is certainly separate from that and does not just apply to ADUs, but rather to all residential uses in the town. So what it would do is change the the use table to reflect that there is a special condition that restricts or imposes a thirty-day minimum rental or lease period for residential or for occupancy in a residential use. So it applies to single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings. It applies to apartments. It applies to current ADUs that are attached, and it would also apply to detached ADUs, should that article go forward. So I don't know if you want to open up discussion on this article or just continue to the next one.
Gordon, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I think the, the issue, Mike, is, and I see that Susan Murphy's on as well. I think the point is, we, we cannot have a longer minimum than thirty days.
Right, so Gordon, why don't we let Susan talk about that? I mean, let's just get that, let's get that question. Susan, Gordon, you want to finish your question? I apologize for interrupting, and then we can.
No, that's it. I just, I think the reason we need to do this is because we determined that that is the longest minimum that, that we are able to have. Is that right?
No, I think, I think, so my name is Susan Murphy. I'm the Town Special Real Estate Council. So Gordon, I think that there just may have been some miscommunications over kind of the last few months with a lot of discussion back and forth on this. The, the comment that I had made at some point, and I don't know if it was on a meeting or maybe just in back and forth emails or something, and that's maybe where the mix-up happened, is my. Is my recommendation was that the timeframes in the, in the. If there is going to be an occupancy minimum in the ADU bylaw. Um, and then also there be one for all dwelling units. Um, and in fact, my recommendation is if you have one for all dwelling units, it's almost, it's duplicative. And I, I wouldn't suggest having a separate one in the ADU bylaw, not that you couldn't, but that they should be consistent. So that was because if you, if you say it's thirty days here and sixty days there. It creates this lack of consistency for different types of dwelling units. Um, but the, the, the thirty days comes from more a. Kind of a, a leasing landlord-tenant type of concept. Where once you have someone who's under a lease or even an unwritten tenancy at will. Um, at thirty days, then under state law, you start getting into landlord-tenant law. Someone who's on a short-term rental, an Airbnb, VRBO, whatever it's going to be, those are not tenants for landlord-tenant law purposes. They don't have the rights to, you know, if they don't leave, you have to go to a housing court to get them evicted, et cetera. So the thirty days is when you start, um, you know, and it doesn't have to be. I mean, you can do and, you know, go down to the Cape and do a summer rental for ninety days, and it doesn't become a lease. It's dependent on the type of contract that you sign, but as a general rule. Thirty days is when it starts turning more into a kind of leased tenant situation and less of a, a short-term rental. If the town um, felt that it was appropriate to make it sixty days, ninety days, however many months you wanted to make it. Um, that, that would be acceptable. Um, I, I think it just came from a, you know, we were looking at case law that was a really good case for Lynnfield. Um, that the SJC decided in twenty twenty-one on a challenge to their bylaw. That, um, you know, had the same thirty-day minimum. Um, and because they were trying to prohibit the short-term rentals, et cetera. Um, and so in thir-, in thirty days, even without a bylaw, there was a similar kind of requirement that came up in a discussion of a whole case. So because it's, it's kind of a starting point in most communities, I think that's, that's where that came up. For this proposed amendment. And then the recommendation was to make the ADU and the general provision of the bylaw consistent. But it, it could be, however, it could be, you know, seventy-three days, it can kind of be whatever you want it to be. So I, I, I think there was just some miscommunication. Um, but hopefully I, if, you know, if we can take that concern off the table, then you can work with whatever timeframes the board is comfortable with.
Um, could, if I could just build on that from a planning perspective and less of a legal perspective. Um, it, I'll echo what Susan just mentioned. Um, that we are presently already enforcing the thirty-day minimum based on the whole case. And that's been longstanding practice in town since that was issued, probably close to ten years ago. Um, but also that for ADUs in particular, if, uh, well, but I guess for any residential unit. If the landlord is unhappy with um, who is occupying that unit. It gives them more flexibility to turn the unit over to somebody who may be a better occupant, a better neighbor. Um, to the, the neighborhood. So it's, um, you know, while we prefer longer-term arrangements, in, in some ways. It may benefit the landlord-owner of the property. Um, or the town more generally, if it's a shorter term, it's sort of a trial basis.
Yeah, could I just ask a question?
Rita, go ahead.
Um, so they don't, if it's thirty days.
Sorry, can you, uh, can you take the microphone in your ear off? I think it's kind of giving us feedback internally.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
No. Okay, uh, if it's um, thirty days and they don't have to sign a lease?
Susan?
No, so there's never a requirement that any tenant sign a lease. Typically in the short-term rental, you know, you have kind of a, if, if you've ever rented a home to go on vacation, whatever, there's some sort of written agreement. Um, that you sign and it's very specific that it's creating a license and not a lease, so as not to create any tenant landlord-tenant obligations. Under a, a lease, which if you're talking about a minimum occupancy and say you go to sixty days, ninety days, even longer. Um, which some communities on the Cape have longer, I, I, then it's typically a, a lease situation. Um, and, you know, that's, that's the difference. And I don't know, Gary referenced it, I had heard that story about Airbnb, I hadn't read the article though, as to whether they're talking about going into the leasing business. Or they're just talking about going, you know, doing extended short-term rentals. But there, there's a big difference um, from a legal perspective. Whether you have just kind of a license to stay there for one or two weeks on vacation versus you are a tenant. But you don't have to have a lease to have a tenant, you can be, you can be a tenant at will month to month for years and years and years. And either party can terminate on thirty days' notice. And I think that, you know, that was kind of the example Emily was using. That if a homeowner in Hingham, for whatever reason, was gonna be away on, you know, got, had to travel for work or something. And was gonna be gone for six months and they wanted to rent out their home, they might lease it on a month-to-month basis. Because if there's a problem with that tenant, it's much easier to evict them and, and terminate their occupancy. Than it would be if you gave them a six-month lease. Um, but it's not alw-, it's not always in writing and it's not required by law to be in writing.
No, their occupancy fees?
I'm sorry, for what? For what, Rita, in what instance?
For, for the short-term rental, their occupancy fees?
Well, typically, like, if you, if you've ever done an Airbnb or a VRBO for your vacation, you always pay whatever the going rate is, right? For that short-term rental.
And just a couple of thoughts, Susan. Um, the, the, uh, I've been a landlord, small landlord for fifty years. And landlord-tenant law in Massachusetts controls all occupancies as, as far as I've been told. And so a couple of thoughts here, one is, no, no matter whether this is a two-week uh, tenancy or a ten-year tenancy. Those, uh, the, the landlord-tenant law applies and also the uh, sanitary code for one and two-family dwelling supplies. Um, I, I get concerned on when one says it's easier to evict. The only entity in this state that can evict someone if the tenant refuses to go is the uh, housing court. And, you know, even if this is under an agreement with a, with a Airbnb or with the owner, or you sign it back of the napkin. Like any contract, it's only as good as when things are going well, but when things go bad, you have to have a good contract. I have some, some concerns about the legality of that. The other question I have, and other towns have done this, a separate way of looking at this. They've said that basically the only short-term rental occupancies in the town can be Airbnb or bed and breakfast. And what that says is that no other residential use can be short-term. And I'm wondering, should we not look at something like that? This is what Concord's doing. Shouldn't, shouldn't we do something like that? Because it seems to me that this is, um, you know, in any tenancy, it's thirty days plus a day. So if you wanna evict someone, it's really sixty days. Uh, I'm just thinking about enforcement on short-term, if somebody doesn't wanna leave. The town has no ability to terminate the occupancy and, and the owner only can terminate it through the courts. So I think we should think a little bit more about this. The other question you had too was, um, Airbnb is, is basically after a month, if they have a short-term, let's say a month. Uh, they're looking at that as a, as a contract internally, but they haven't, I don't think they, based on what he had read and I read another article, I don't think they're. If they're looking at six-month rentals or a year rental, I don't think they'd be, they'd do that on, I don't think they've come to a conclusion as to how they would do that. It, the concern there is, is that most of those longer-term rentals are currently in the rental pool. And if they go out of the rental pool and they become Airbnbs, they're gonna be very expensive.
Um, Gordon, you kind of started with this question, I just wanna make sure Susan's answered your question kind of completely. And, and not, I'm gonna put a pin in this, and it's an important piece of it, um, but I do want Mike to kind of finish so we can freely talk about kind of all the options that are out there. Not just the residency kind of duration period.
Yeah, please, uh, let him proceed. I'm sure we'll discuss this further.
Thank you, Susan, and Emily as well. Michael, please go ahead.
So just for clarity purposes, this is a separate article. Um, the next one is the ADU article, um, whoops. Um, and within the proposed bylaw amendment for the ADU detached ADUs includes a thirty-day um, minimum occupancy as well. Um, so it's kind of duplicative, but the previous slide is its standalone article for all residential uses. Just wanted to clarify. Um, so this article um. Is to amend section five K of the zoning bylaw as well as um, section three A where it references section five K. Um, and it's to, it's to allow detached accessory dwelling units, um, and within that. The proposed revisions, uh, or amendments, I should say, to the zoning bylaw include. A list of items here within the intent paragraph. Um, I can certainly go through this and read it verbatim if you'd like, it's also available on the town's website. Um, for folks who are here, it's on the planning board's webpage under proposed bylaw amendments, um, any zoning article can be found there.
You don't need to read it verbatim, thank you, that, that's fine.
Sure. Um, okay, so I think, I think what folks wanted, or what you wanted to focus on tonight, Kevin, was the family aspect. Um, that certainly is a, a proposal within this bylaw amendment is to lift that family restriction. Um, and to give a little bit more context, um, we've given you the benchmark community comparison again here. Um, so this is a list of all of the, the benchmark communities that we base ourselves off of essentially. Um, with the, with the exception of Duxbury, um, that is not listed as a benchmark community. Um, but if you notice here, seventy, se-, excuse me, seventy-nine percent of the communities on this list. Do actually not restrict occupancy, so it can be in, um, a family member or it can be a non-family member. Um, so that's where you see under occupancies, it says unrestricted. Um, so the, the four communities on this list that do restrict occupancy are Hingham, Milton, Needham, and Rockland. Um, I'll just mention that both Milton and Needham are currently undergoing. Um, uh, a process to, to, it also like us investigate whether or not they wanna lift that family restriction. Um, so those are two of the communities on this list. Um, most of these do not regulate the occupancy term. So um, through this proposed bylaw amendment, um, a thirty-day. Um, minimum occupancy, occupancy term is being proposed. Norwell and Wellesley also have those um, restrictions, uh, and that they just adopted those within the past year. Um, a couple of communities that also recently adopted a, you know, occupancy term. Um, a minimum occupancy term is uh, Newton and Salem, um, they are also at thirty days. Um, so this, you know, you, you folks have seen this before, but this just kind of provides it. Um, to you again, so that you can just get a better sense of. Um, what, what other communities are doing, our benchmark communities.
Mike, I just had one question. Um, I'm talking with the, the planning board folks in Milton. Um, my understanding is, is that it, it um, was just turned down at town meeting. They, they proposed a very, um, very comprehensive ADU bylaw. Um, many points in that bylaw we could put in our bylaw, but town meeting in Milton just rejected it.
Yeah, uh, it's our understanding that it's back to a study committee in Milton, um, so it's, I.
Gary, Gary, do you know the timeframe with that? Like, was it just in the spring or was it a fall special town meeting?
My understanding in talking with them was is that it was uh, late fall, but I didn't get an actual date of the meeting.
Everything we were able to find online said that it was taken up in the spring and then referred back to the planning board for um, study. But, but we can definitely look into that and if you have information, you can share.
Yeah, I think we should look into it.
But again, I'll, I'll go, I'll go back to my original question, right? What has, like, this tells me the existence of them, right? And the argument is not all the cool kids are doing it, so we should too. What has their experience been, I think would be very helpful for us at some point.
Gordon, to respond to that question, actually, the Affordable Housing Trust and the Land Use and Development Department did some research during the, you know. The meetings, public meetings leading up to this and presented what their survey showed. Um, from discussions with uh, many of these communities. So I, we can reshare that with, with the board, but I, to, you know, kind of summarize it. Uh, there had not been any issues to date.
Um, Emily, can I ask you a question? Um, any of the, the communities that have just attached ADUs, are they changing to uh, detached? Cause a lot of them have just attached.
You, well, yeah, Canton, um, Cohasset, Dedham, Duxbury. And uh, that are unrestricted, so it's, it's fewer of the benchmark.
No, 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 I'm, no, I'm sorry, and my, I'm sorry, the question was, are any of them going to be having all the attached? Communities that, that have attached only ADUs, are any of them going to do detached ADUs?
Oh, um, based on the research we found, and we can follow up and try to call them and see, you know, what they're exploring. Um, but of those four that I just listed off, I, I am unaware of any um, amendments to, to modify it to. Um, detached as well.
One of the things also is Cohasset is rewriting their bylaw now. So there's a, there's some discussion about attached and detached in Cohasset.
To allow detached.
Yeah, there is some now, but the bylaw is being redone because they don't think that it's been very effective.
All right, tha- thank you, Michael, Emily. Michael, are you, I want you done kind of the overview slides?
Uh, sorry, Kevin, uh, can you say that one, one more time?
Just wanna make sure, are you done with the overview slides?
Oh, yes, that, that's all I have, uh, yeah.
So, um, we do have a couple, um, kind of touching on some of the questions we had and realize it's ten forty, so we'll get to the members of the public soon. I think, um, Tom Clancy's here, it's just that someone, so we don't have to keep on bringing him back to all our meetings. Um, I was hoping Mr. Clancy could talk a bit about, um, kind of, you know, his purview and, and how they handle some of these ADU familiar, non-familiar enforcement. Stop questions for us, uh, even just to kind of bring up discussion points that we might talk about, consider.
Uh, good mo-, uh, evening. Um, since I've been in town about ten years now. Um, we've had two Airbnbs that I had to do some enforcement on. Um, I sent the owners a letter, um, they didn't realize they weren't allowed and they stopped. Um, that was through, um, somebody called the building department and complained. Um, we always asked them to come in and fill out a request for zoning enforcement. Um, they did do that, sometimes people are hesitant to um, put their name on the farm. But um, we can't just go up to somebody's house without some information first. Um, on that, so there was only two Airbnbs, Airbnbs that we had enforcement on. And the other was an apartment that they had built illegally over a garage. Um, we did um, get a, a, a enforcement letter. Um, I did send the owners a, um, a letter asking for a site visit. Uh, myself, the plumbing, electrical and uh, fire department went out. Um, it was an apartment above the uh, second floor of a garage. Uh, they did remove the kitchen. They also removed the um, tub and shower. And um, they were allowed to have a half-bath, which today's zoning that we have in Hingham now. If you have a garage and people want habitable space on the second floor, they can have a half-bath. Of course, they cannot have a kitchen or a bedroom or a shower, unless you get into like a, um, a pool house. You could have a, um, a kitchen, you know, a full shower, full bath. Um, but you could not have a bedroom. So again, the, the three times that I've dealt with it. Um, it took a little bit longer on the apartment, but um, they did finally, uh. Um, follow the bylaw and the building code and, and it was removed. Um, follow the by law and the building code and, and it was removed. Um, I think A D Us are good. Um, for all communities, um, the housing is uh, shot, but um, as far as how the planning board. Wants to uh, make the rules and regulations, um, we will follow and enforce them. Just like we do the rest of the by law.
Any board members, any questions for Mr. Clancy? True, go ahead, please.
I do, hi, Mike.
Hi, how are you, June?
For your comments, good, thank you, um, my question is really about the. Right now, we do have permitted accessory dwelling units in primary residences that have been permitted over the last few years since. Um, I think it was twenty sixteen when town meeting passed, um, you know, the by law to allow them. How many, I think there are a dozen or so, um, if the person living in that apartment. Is no longer related to the primary, to the owner of the home. How would you find out about that, and how would that, um, what would happen to that dwelling unit? Once the family member doesn't live there anymore?
Well, um, you've, you've lived in Hingham a long time, and I think the neighbors of somebody's home where there's something going. Something going on, they usually will let another neighbor know, or they'll let somebody know, but usually they'll call the building department. Saying there's something that is vacant, or um, there's something else going on there that doesn't meet the permit that was issued. So we asked them to uh, fill out the, again, the zoning enforcement, uh, and then we go out and check it out, but as far as. Because a, a family member isn't living in there. For, you know, maybe six months or so, maybe another family member might take it over afterwards, um. When you have a single family home, or a two-family home, or any type of a, a dwelling unit, if an occupancy is issued. It doesn't mean that the occupancy is revoked when somebody's not living there. So if you wanted to put that in your rules and regs, that it would become nil and void after a certain amount of time. Um, you know, I, I, it's not in the building code. But maybe, um, you know, with Susan Murphy and the, it could be added into the zoning by law, I'm not sure on that.
Yeah, neither am I, because my understanding is that those accessory apartments are only for family members, and yet. There's no, you know, once that's built, they're not telling you, they're telling you every year that they still have it, but they're not telling you. Who's living in it and whether they're related to them or not.
That's correct.
Right, so, hmm, it, and certainly if, if, you know, my neighbors aren't gonna. Call, you know, if somebody moves in who, they're not gonna find out whether they're related to me or not, and, and, you know, as long as. It, it's more often something was going wrong, you know, there's a problem with the na- with the renter, but um, anyway, thank you, I, I. That's what I, that's what I was, um, that's what I was thinking.
Mike, I had one question, um, relative to the utilities, in the existing A D Us in the primary residence. The, there aren't shared utilities in terms of separate utility bills, it's the, the resident, the primary owner of the house. The owner of the primary residence has the utilities in their name, and then anybody living in that accessory dwelling unit in the primary residence would be. Basically paying the owner for the heat, the oil, the gas, the electric, uh, am I correct on that?
Usually that's how it is, yes.
So that basically is an incentive relative to, um, you know, how the family manages the transition.
True, but again, if you had a detached A D U and however, they have the um. The lease or however they work that out is, if they're paying separate utilities, you'd have to run all of those in separately. Which would add quite a bit to the A D U if it wasn't coming off, um, the existing home that's there now. It would be, you know, a complete, separate home.
Yeah, I understood that in the detached A D U in the original discussion, and I thought in the proposed by law. It's on the table, I thought that there were no shared utilities even in the detached A D U, I thought they all had to be part of the primary.
Yeah, guys, we'll, we'll leave that to our discussion, I think, that's, that's really important to answer our, our, you know, our attitude on that, not, not further than Mike, any other questions from board members for Mr. Clancy? Mr. Clancy, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome, anytime.
Absolutely, thank you, so it's seven fifty, um, causing the time in my opening statement that I wanted to shoot for an hour, so let me, um. Let's pivot it opens up to members of the public, so the board can kind of get a sense of some public sentiment and questions, comments. That we can take back for consideration, I think that's probably going to carry us through our time, so I know we didn't have a, you know, truly substantive. Discussion of some of these topics, um, I think at the end of this, I'll propose that we continue to next week, and I think we'll open with, you know, a five-member discussion, to the extent five of us are here, Rita, I think you might not be. Kind of on, um, specific topics, and we'll move some of this conversation forward, so apologize that I did not get to some of the substantive conversation from members of the public. But let's hear some thoughts from members of the public, Mr. Collins, you are the first person on my list, but has his hand up, so please state your name and address the record and go ahead. And as I said earlier, please leave a comment to about three minutes, just cause I know we don't want to speak.
Um, hi, everybody, can you see me?
Yes, we can.
Um, there's been a, a.
Mark, can you just say your name and address the record, please?
I'm sorry, uh, Mark Collins, forty-four Spring Street, um, this, this been a very helpful uh, discussion, and I appreciate everybody. I also uh, appreciate, um, uh, Mike Clancy's affirmation of the idea. A D U's being good for all communities, um, the, most of the discussion, or much of the discussion, has been about uh, family. And one of the, um. Devil in the details kinds of things that I discovered in my participation in the study committee. Uh, back in two thousand fourteen, I guess, eight years ago, uh, was, how do you define family? So I would just pose that to the planning board, um, to consider as, um. Uh, something that, um, that, well, that should be considered, and I note that on the, uh, the table. Um, that was presented, that most of the communities are unrestricted, and just a few are restricted to family. And my experience in a conversation uh, with a town planner was that. Uh, that that particular town, I believe it was Wayland, abandoned the idea of family because they simply couldn't define it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, uh, Mr. Falby, please go ahead.
Jack.
Thanks, Kevin, uh, John Falby, I'm chair of the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust. Um, and thanks once again, everybody, for this forum to consider this important issue, um, I want to respond to just a. Um, to a couple of the concerns that Gordon raised, and Gordon, I, you know, as I've said before, I think. Of course, you're asking the right questions and wondering whether, um, these, you know, A D Us lifting the family restriction. Will, um, help create some more affordable housing, lower-cost housing, and, um, whether, whether it'll assist homeowners to age in place. The, 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 the issue we have, and, and we have, um, spoken to some peer towns. And we're continuing to speak to peer towns to gather as much information as we can. Is that the peer towns don't track either, either type of data, they don't track, um, what rents are being charged. Uh, nor do they track the age of the homeowners, we might be able to gather some of that information anyway, uh, some of the latter information at least. Ages out of public databases, but not, not likely so for, for rentals, so. We are going to do some more work on that over the next, um, handful of weeks, as these hearings continue, and we'll. Report back in an organized way what we're able to learn about peer towns, um, I wanted to just touch on. Maybe a couple of other things, one is this, um, issue of whether we, we need to be restricted to a thirty-day, um. Uh, um, ma- uh, minimum lease period, I, we, we saw some data that Beth Rulo, um, shared. Earlier today, that's a matrix of, um, A D U provisions on towns on Cape Cod. And I thought of them because they're, they raised the same issue you've raised about some concern as a coastal community, whether. People would, um, you know, who, who aren't, uh, aging or anything, uh, you know, in that category would want to do A D Us. To just make extra money, um, on the Cape, eight of the fifteen towns that have. Um, A D U provisions have a twelve-month minimum, um, period, so that's, you know, quite long, but. And, and another has a six month, so it does suggest that you could, um, you know, use a longer time period if that was. Really the concern, um, uh, you, you, you had in mind, and I guess just one final point for now, um. On the affordability point, assuming we're not able, um, to find out what the rents are that have been charged in our peer towns. Um, that, right now, um, someone is at eighty percent of median area income. Um, as, as a couple, if they're making about eighty-nine or ninety thousand dollars a year. Um, that would suggest that thirty percent, spending thirty percent of your money on rent, you could spend something like twenty-six thousand dollars, so. A two thousand dollar, twenty-two hundred dollar a month rent is deemed affordable, even under the forty B definition. If you go look at, um, listings in Hingham for, for units that are under a thousand square feet, a lot of them are right around there. So I think the market tells you reasonably that, that these, um, small units. That are only in neighborhoods, they don't have the amenities of a, a nice place over at Avalon, or wherever. Are going to be renting right around that affordability point, and, um, we will try to get you better data on that. Um, but, you know, it, it, we, we point to the other towns, of course, not just because they're the cool towns. But because they've, so far, as we can understand it, um, they're a lot like ours, and they've, they've had. Um, non-familiar A D Us for long periods of time without incident, and we've heard a lot about. Fears and, you know, things that could happen, the experience in other towns. I, I would say as reported in that, um, Pioneer Institute study, um, that was done back in two thousand eighteen. And as far as we can tell from our peer towns by speaking to, um, folks on pl- planning boards and elsewhere. Uh, they just are not running into trouble, um, a little bit of, uh, misgivings at the front end as, as, as a neighbor is perhaps offering one. But we're not hearing anything about inordinate trouble with them, um, once they're offered, so we will try to get back to you with. Um, some more data in, in the future, but those are kind of our initial points.
Thank you, Mr. Falby, I, I do encourage you to submit that data, I mean, obviously it addresses some of our pretty pertinent questions, so we'd welcome that as a resource. Thank you, uh, Ms. Sutton, your hand is next kind of in my queue, please go ahead.
Hi, yeah, thank you, uh, Katie Sutton, two forty-five Levitt Street, um, I'm speaking on behalf of, uh, as the Chair of the Hingham Unity Council, um. And, um, basically, you know, we know we have a housing shortage both here in Hingham and throughout the Commonwealth, and at the same time, we know our demographics. Are trending towards an older population, um, a recent, uh, study that, um, the Department of Elder Services here did estimates. Uh, suggests that by twenty thirty-five, older residents are going to make up thirty-nine percent of our population. Uh, and a lot of these folks are probably going to seek options to stay in this community where they've lived, worked, worshipped, and possibly raised children. Um, the proposal to lift the family restriction is going to open up more options to them, uh, regardless of whether they have family members here. Um, and options to other folks, um, as Jack points out, simple, um, you know, simple math, looking at the kind of units we're talking about. And supply and demand, more is more, and hopefully will open up more options for folks, uh, with the corresponding very small impact on existing infrastructure. Roads, utilities, and open space, um, and, you know, the proposed by law, as we've been discussing tonight, has a lot of restrictions in it. Um, that I think will mitigate, um, sort of this fear that it's going to. You know, rampantly affect the, the character of our town, um, coupled with the data, um, from the other committees, which. Other communities, which it's not easy to obtain, but we know that them, these, these units have not been built excessively. Uh, in these peer communities who have relaxed their residency restriction, um, and nor is there any real evidence that there have been adverse effects on. Uh, community resources or character, um, so this, this fear seems substantially unfounded, that this is going to be a, a major burden on our town. Um, we, we find that, um, that this, the, the, the other thing is, as, as Mark Collins pointed out earlier. Not all families look the same, um, or are built in traditional ways, um, an example I can think of is. You know, a foster child who's aged out of the system, but maybe wasn't adopted by a family, but lived with them. Um, a step-parent situation where the child wasn't officially adopted, things like this. This restriction creates an undue burden on that type of situation, many more like that, um, and again, it, it opens up a lot of options, both for. Uh, seniors who want to age in place to either, um, bring in, even, even if they're not concerned about the income, perhaps they could bring in a caregiver. Uh, to live in that A D U as well, so, um, and, and finally, uh, we do agree with Rita's suggestion, uh, that, that we had put in our comment. Uh, last summer, that if there's a way to build a tax incentive in for a, a below-market rent, uh, we'd be very supportive of that as well, so. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton, appreciate it, um, Ms. Callan?
Yeah, I had a question.
Uh, can you say your name and address the record, please?
I'm sorry, Alien Towne on nine Long Meadow Road, so I had a question that circled back to something that somebody raised about. Uh, the possibility of assessments, you know, property assessments going up because you had an A D U. And an equity issue there, particularly if you were dealing with an older person who was looking to. Uh, you, you have a caregiver or, or a family member staying there versus somebody who's going to turn it into an income generating property, how do you differentiate? Do these towns do different, do they assess for A D Us, does that drive your property value up? And is there a way to differentiate between somebody who's making a profit off their A D U, and someone who's just letting. A, a special needs child live there because they can't live independently, or someone who's got a family member or a caregiver, they're not charging rent. Or minimum rent to, to be there to care for them, because if just every A D U suddenly increases your property value. That's not, that's not equitable between the people who are housing a special needs child or a caregiver versus somebody who's making. Two thousand, three thousand, four thousand dollars a month renting their property out, how does that get handled, I guess, is, is my concern?
Thank you, Ms. Callan, um, let's go through the members of the public, I think Emily, Michael, you guys, um. I think in my, you know, oral comments, because I didn't submit written comments either, um, I'd ask kind of, kind of that similar question, so thank you, Ms. Callan. Um, we have someone from the board assesses you speak on that, or would you kind of generate those comments that you, you, your discussions with the board assessors, will you, will you relay them back to us, is that the plan?
Uh, yes, I, I did have an informal.
As a long-winded.
Sorry, I did have an informal discussion with their office today, the assessor's office, um, but the assessor was out of the office today. I can certainly reach out, um, to try to get some written comments from her, um, or if one of her, um, board members. Wishes to provide comments, um, but I can certainly get something, at least in writing.
But I think, I think I'd find that helpful, and Ms. Callan, thank you for asking the question, I think that's, that'd be a good path for where I'm certainly also happy to call, um, Ms. Harstrick?
Hey, everyone, uh, JoBeth Harstrick, twenty-five Rockwood Road, um, and this, I'm, I'm new to town, I moved in twenty. Twenty, um, love it here, and, you know, the pandemic kind of changed, uh, everyone's world as far as working from home. Uh, my husband and I both work from home now, um, we're kind of running, running out of space. I am here to just advocate for a detached accessory unit that is also able to have a shower, um, from my understanding. That is not possible unless you have a in-ground pool, um, I would just also like to call out the little bit of inequity. Um, you know, uh, to our population, just making sure that that's equitable to everyone. Um, not everyone is, uh, able to put in in-ground pool, um, so just wanted to call that out. Especially in, in regards to kind of how, um, someone mentioned, kind of, not every family looks the same. Um, so I would just like to advocate for, for that, um, that, you know, is from my understanding, um. That it is not possible to kind of have a dwelling unit that has a toilet and a shower, so, um, and. It's great to hear kind of the conversation around, uh, potential renting of said accessory dwelling unit, that's not something that is in. Our current plans, but, um, you know, the world is still kind of evolving, uh, post-pandemic, so. Being able to support family would be, would be helpful, thank you.
My name is Arthur, um, Ms. Denaply?
Hi, Diane Denaply, sixteen Gardner Street, Kevin, thanks for taking my question, I just wanted to, um, dovetail off of some of the questions about equity. Uh, I am speaking tonight just as a resident, um, I think it is really important that if we are to move forward with any kind of rental. Uh, whatever, it's thirty, sixty, ninety days, that we do really look at. That we do really look at what Salem is doing in respect to tax incentives. And benefits for people either who um, want to create a unit for someone with disabilities, a parent, perhaps a disabled veteran. Um, again, it gets back to what is affordable, and I know there's the ratio of twenty two, twenty six thousand dollars may seem affordable to some. But for most people living on a disability, if you, that is simply way out of touch, way unreachable, so. I encourage we have more of these conversations, let's look at what Salem's doing. I found their bylaw really remarkable, it's very, probably maybe a big step, but I think if we're talking rent, let's actually make it. Where people, we can open it, not just housing stock, but people, we're trying, who are, why are we doing this? Who are going to live in these units, and um, thank you again for a really great conversation tonight, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Athol, uh, anybody else in the public want to speak tonight, I just don't see their hands raised, if so, please just speak up and say your name and address for the record. Emily, Mike, I'm not seeing anyone, but I can only see, you know, a third of the sixty people here.
I'm not seeing any.
Uh, sitting on, it's eight oh six, so I I think as a board, uh, or at least. Um, at least for the section of the the meeting, um, I propose that we continue this discussion from here, I think we set the table pretty well. Um, Michael, you and I spoke briefly earlier, I think we have a meeting January thirty, which is next Monday, um, and that it has some opening right for something along these lines?
Yep.
Um, Rita, is it correct that you're not going to be here next week? So I make sure we. Wherever you went.
No.
No, you are not here?
No, I will not.
Okay, uh, all other members of the board, will you be here next week?
Yes, I will.
All right, then, I think, um, Rita, um, I think we're going to move this forward, and your concerns are counted, and noted, obviously it won't be the final discussion on this, um, we certainly want us to be doing anything. With finale next week, but I think we do need to move the conversation forward while we have the time. So I'd make a motion that we continue to be hearing on accessory dwelling units, uh, zoning article. And that we continue to be hearing on the minimum occupancy term for residential uses zoning article to the January thirty, two thousand twenty three meeting of the planning board at seven P M. Is there a second for that motion?
Second. Moved.
Um, thank you, Judy, a quick roll call vote, Gary?
Hi.
Uh, Rita?
I.
Gordon?
Hi.
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 And I'm I as well, uh, thank you to members of the public for participation, um, please stop by next week if you have any further questions or comments or want to join us for more of the discussion. Uh, and with that, Judy, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, Kevin, um, and I just wanted, if Mike could just jot down, I I still think it would be really helpful if we could somehow clip. These portions of our meetings that have to do with zoning articles and compile them on um, and put them on our page, I don't know if that's possible, but.
Uh, yeah, I did.
Really helpful for Rita for missing next week's, but for just anybody who's interested in this.
Yep, I did a brief conversation with I T, um, and we're going to try to figure out some way that we can get this up there.
Yeah, Mike, even if we just note where the um, ADU study question start and stop, so people don't have to watch when I. Confidence is going to be another twoish hours of uh, planning board discussion, and they can kind of find it pretty quickly.
And I I guess just for everyone else's benefit, um, who may maybe not have attended the um, ADU hearings or meetings back in the fall. Um, all of the ADU study committee, um, documents and the work that they did is on their webpage. Um, under documents, you can see um, both their report to the planning board as well as um. All of the research and presentations that um, they went through through their process.
Great.
Can I just ask a question, Judy?
Yes.
Um, so we were discussing about the thirty days. Um, now, when do we, uh, you know, kind of talk about what we would like to move forward with that?
Well, we're gonna talk about some of us. You want to know when we're going to finalize this, but as Kevin said, we're going to have another meeting, but we won't. Have this, this, this is an iterative process, and um, I I don't think we will have a vote on it until the end of February, is that fair?
Okay. That's.
Certainly, um, and and you know, following up on that, Rita, Susan Murphy, if you're still on the call, um, I think maybe we'd ask for some kind of written. Kind of, um, just kind of tutorial or guide for us as a board on kind of the um, occupancy kind of lease, um, you know, maybe use the word sublet, or you know, kind of just um. License to use style issues, so we can have those as a reference point going forward. So I think that might be helpful to kind of set the record straight for us and give us some direction on where we can go with that.
Yeah, thank you, so um, the next item on our agenda is. Uh, two one three and two one five Cushing Street, this is Bristol Brothers Development Corp filed an application for definitive flexible residential development. And um, actually, the applicant um, has requested a continuance to January thirtieth. In order to align different parts of the application and uh, to respond to peer review comments. So um, before making a motion to continue, does anyone on the board have any questions about this?
Judy, the only question I had was there, I I saw a note about extending the deadline to. For a decision deadline?
Right, we would have to, because we wouldn't, we wouldn't, it's just, it's just procedural.
Right, I thought you might just want to add that, okay.
Yeah. Um, anybody in the public have a question about this? Okay, if not, I would uh, entertain a motion that the planning board continue the application of Bristol Brothers Development Corp for definitive flexible residential development, F R D. Under section four D with site plan review under section one, I of the zoning bylaw. And such other relief as necessary for flexible residential development. Consisting of eight single-family dwellings on seven point four eight acres of land. At two one three and two one five Cushing Street in Residence District C. And the Accord Pond Watershed and the Hingham Aquifer Protection District. To January thirty, twenty twenty three at seven P M, and extend the decision deadline to March thirteenth, twenty twenty three, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Gary, second?
Second.
And Rita, um, all those in favor, we'll start with Kevin.
Hi, thank you, Judy.
Gary?
Hi.
Gordon?
Hi.
Rita?
I.
And I am an I as well, thank you, uh, the next item on our agenda is one thirty six Nicomus Road. Uh, Shadi Alalum submitted an application for site plan review with waiver requests under section one I of the Hingham zoning bylaw, and. At this point, is requesting uh, to withdraw the application without prejudice, uh, are there any questions about this? Um, and anybody from the public with a question about this? One thirty six Nicomus Road. If not, uh, I would entertain a motion that the planning board grant the request to withdraw without prejudice the application of Shadi Alalum for site plan review with waiver requests under section one I. Of the Hingham zoning bylaw and such other relief as necessary to install. Twenty five by thirty foot patio driveway, club surface stormwater driven and regrade at one thirty six Nicomus Road in Residence District. Sarah Motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Kevin, and second?
Gary. Second.
Thank you, Gary, all those in favor, we'll start with Rita.
I.
Gordon?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Kevin?
Hi.
And I am an I as well, thank you, um, the next item on our agenda is uh. Hingham Municipal Light Plant filed an application for modification of the special permit A two parking determination. Originally issued February one, two thousand six under section five A. A special permit A three parking determination. And a waiver of site plan review under section one I of the zoning bylaw, and such other relief as necessary. To install an electric vehicle charging station at two twenty six Beale Street, which is Lynch Field. In the official and open space district. Um, we have received uh, the application package from Hingham Municipal Light Plant, the site plan. And public comment from um. For uh, the Butters. Um. And there, all the letters are found on the planning board's uh. Webpage, uh, it says, look at that, I went like this and it raised my hand. Um. And on the planning board's webpage, under applications pending, so you can review all of the materials uh, that we received as well. Is someone here from the applicant who would like to make a brief presentation of um, this proposed uh, parking change?
Yes, I I'm here from the Hingham Light Plant tonight, I'm their sustainability coordinator.
And your name is?
Brianna Bennett.
Thank you so much, please go ahead.
Thank you, so I I did make a brief presentation and I'll I'll share my screen with it now, let me. Um. See if I can find the present button, um. From the beginning, so that should be full screen now, so hello, as I said, I'm here from the Hingham Light Plant to talk about the proposed. Electric vehicle charging station that's at two twenty six Beale Street, often known as Lynch Field. Um, we have our design here that we had submitted to the planning board. So we're requesting two parking spots at Lynchfield parking lot. Um, one spot would be for the electric vehicle charging, and the other spot would be for ADA accessibility. Um, we do this to comply with the state grant requirements, we received about ninety thousand dollars to install this charging station from the state. Um, and so the ADA accessibility lane is one of those requirements that would enable us to get the grant funding. Um, and then we would also install E V only signage with that, and it would be available twenty four seven to the public. Um, as you can see in the drawing here, it would include, we wouldn't, H M L P would install a pole. Um, it would be including a three-phase uh, transformer on the pole, and that would allow us to serve the electricity to the station. And then we would install a a meter, um, as well as the the D C F C, so the station itself. Itself is a direct current fast charger, which is D C F C. Um, and those charge faster than, say, a level two charging station, which we do have a a few of in Hingham. Um, and then you can see a few bollards on the image here, I will just say. We're not planning on installing five bollards around the station, we'll probably be installing one to two. Um, and they'll likely be installed on either side of the station itself, it's just to protect it so that nobody can accidentally crash into the station. Um, although I don't think that will happen, um, but bollards are just there to to protect everything. Um, this is a better overview of the entire parking lot, so we've kind of located it in the corner there. Um, rather than the center or up at the front of the ball field. Um, and then we didn't want to disturb the fence line that's at the front of the parking spot where a station would typically be seen. So we've located it off to the side and someone can park in that spot that you see in green here. Um, and then they can charge at the blue square, which is the station, and then there's uh, the access lane next to that. Um, and then, as I mentioned, we have other stations in Hingham. Uh, there is one at Carlson Field, the South Shore Country Club, and there are two at Station Street. These are all level two charging stations, so they take about two to four hours to charge a vehicle. Versus a level three charging station, which would be able to charge someone in about thirty minutes. Um, so that's, that's just a quick overview of what the what the project is that we're going forward with, and I'm excited to. Answer any questions you have and and help address any comments.
Thank you so much, it's so interesting, um, does anybody on the board have any questions?
Judy, I did, if I could.
Sure.
Yeah, hi, hi Brianna, thanks for presenting. Um, I just had a couple of questions, I was wondering, um, this is right at Beale Street. And right at the curb at Beale Street, does it make sense to? Either put a little more like another bollard and or landscaping um, to kind of screen it, um. I just was wondering if you had considered that, I I was reading one of the. The Butters' letters and they were concerned about the visibility and what have you, and I didn't know whether that would be possible.
Um, so we could put in additional bollards if it's a safety concern. Um, but I think typically we only do two bollards with the station, just to make sure that both sides of it are protected. Um, but because it's on that edge, you know, if someone was to come in. From the the backside of the station, say, from the street, and you know, there could potentially be a bollard. Behind the station to protect it, but someone would need to go over the um, sidewalk and the. Get to it, so we've we've discussed that a bit, and we don't think we'll need a bollard there. Um, and we'd like to minimize the the infrastructure that does need to get installed. Um, and I should have added at the beginning too, I'm joined tonight by um, Tom Morahan, the General Manager of Hingham Light. As well as Mark Skridner, who is the Associate Director of Transportation at Energy New England, and he's our E V specialist. Um, and then Rose Lenoff as well, she is the Flow Business Development Manager. Um, and so they're they're all on the call tonight to help answer questions as well.
Hey, Gary.
This is quite a team. Hi, Tom.
Tom Moran, uh, to answer your question about the screening, uh, you know, we we would entertain, you know, installing screening on the, you know, the backside of the. The uh, station to screen it from the street if that. Made it more acceptable to the people that live in that area.
Yeah, I think that would be appreciated, um, just a technical question, this charge is a fast charging charger because of the. Anticipated turnover of of people per activities in that Lynchfield parking lot, is that? That's why it's a fast charging rather than the other ones we have over at the Country Club and. And at Carson Field.
Yeah, so we had, uh, we, you know, when we applied for these grants. We looked for a number of locations throughout town. To install these, and some of the, a couple of the things that were required were. They'd be near a a major thoroughfare. And they'd be on uh, town property accessible to uh, to anyone twenty seven, so. Uh, given that this was close to Route three, uh, or three A, um, you know, we had looked up at Derby Street, but couldn't find any. Uh, areas where there were parking lots that were town owned to install this, so. That's why we ended up with the, there's one at this location, there's one at Station Street that we're.
And is the, is the participation by the public in using these increasing now that there are no room or installed?
Yeah, we have seen additional usage on the the level two charges, obviously we don't have any level uh, three charges in town, so at this point.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, uh, Gordon?
Uh. Yeah, I guess, um. So this is an interesting location um, for this, and it's a little different than I think some of the other places that we've looked at, this is, I guess, a Tom or Brianna question, right? Because of the high level of activity in that parking lot and the number of. People that are drawn to those fields when they're drawn to those fields, right, parking becomes. Really tricky, and they're up and down Beale Street as we've all seen, and. My understanding of of these is that the way you regulate somebody hogging a space is that they're. Once you're fully charged, it becomes, you know, a sort of a surcharge that goes on top. In order to encourage you to leave that space and go somewhere else, the problem here is that once somebody farts to go watch their kid's game, right, and. By recollection of T-ball is a long way, and it only felt like it lasted forever, but it does last a long time. The, the obligation to then leave that space and go try to find another space is going to be difficult. And then once people know about it, the jockeying to get in there, if there are multiple people trying to. Um, uh, charge their their car while they're there. Strikes me as at least a potential complication. Are you planning on on deploying those surcharges after uh, someone has reached full charge? Um, in order to encourage that turnover, or is that not contemplated here, maybe it's not allowed with the grant, Tom, I don't know, but.
Yeah, no, that we have that in place right now on the uh, the level two charges that, so if you if you park, if you're. You park there, you charge, you finish your charge, you'll, I think it's thirty minutes, after thirty minutes, you start being charged a. Uh, additional fee for parking there, even though you're not charging.
And that would happen here too.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I I just predicted a, a bit of a complication within that parking lot when that starts to happen, but. But maybe it'll be just like any other. Coming and going, and then I guess my other question, and I think you probably answered it. Some of the folks that uh, that had written the letter, some of the neighbors. Um. Had questioned whether or not it needed to be twenty four seven, right, and you know, could it, could it have a? A time period, just like any gas station is either open or closed, right, uh? Uh, can you do that, or does the grant require it being available twenty four seven?
Uh, the grant requires it to be twenty four seven, I believe, Brianna, is that, I'm pretty sure, right?
Yes, yes, it'll be available, but typically, because the charging station takes the long, even thirty minutes is a a kind of a long time. We haven't been seeing people plugging in, you know, in the middle of the night unless they are leaving their car overnight. Um, so it's, it's not something where people are showing up at midnight or or three A M and and plugging in and waiting and sitting there in the parking lot. Um, they're typically, you know, not. I, with the thirty minute stations, I guess it could be a little bit different, but we don't plan on installing like excess lighting to support night use and anything like that. Um, we just, you know, the station will be there if someone needs it, um, and I think that it's. I I also just wanted to briefly add that we can change the structure of how we charge at the stations, how we charge people to charge. Um, so if it's something where an idle fee becomes an issue, especially during ball games and things like that, we can remove that fee or change. We can remove that fee or change the structure that we're using. And that's something that we have the flexibility to do with, with the dashboard.
Thank you. Rita? Your sound is really terrible. I don't know.
How do you charge somebody for after charging being there too long?
Did you hear that Brianna?
Is my, is it bad?
It's very bad, but I think you said, how do people get charged? Hey, how do people pay? Not how do they, their vehicles get charged?
Right, or if they're there, or they're there too long. I think it's a personal parking spot for her.
How do people pay?
Enforce that, that people are using it to charge.
Okay, um, yeah, so. No, you're fine. So we have access to each individual station. And we can set the, the charging to be based on per kilowatt hour or per hour that they plug in. So maybe they plug in and it charges them a dollar fifty an hour. Then they can, you know, stay and then if they stay plugged in, there's a grace period and then they would start to get some sort of idle fee that's similar to if they were charging. Versus per kilowatt hour, which we currently use on our station. I think our rate is twenty-two cents per kilowatt hour right now, which is lower than some of the other towns that have charging stations. Because it's based on the electric rate and because Hanum Lights rates are lower than you might find in a national grid territory or an evergreen territory. That's why you would see a discrepancy there. And so we, we're not trying to really profit off of these stations or anything. So that's why the, we're trying to keep the rate as, you know, low and as reasonable as possible. So it is twenty-two cents right now and it, it is kind of based on what the rate is. But again, we could go to a per hour. Uh, system as well if it worked better.
So you have the data from each one of the stations that tells you how long people are staying and that kind of thing.
We do, yeah. And we actually haven't needed to use the idle fee yet, which is very interesting. People haven't been idling at the stations. And I will say Carlson Field is the other field that we have a station at. And it, it does seem like the usage there is, is pretty low. And we can tell that people are mostly plugging in during the, during days where we believe there are ballgames and they're staying for a couple of hours. And then heading home. So I, I think that, you know, this wouldn't attract too many other people to the parking site. It, it's just an interesting thing. We, we only have so much data because we've had the charging stations for about a year. But I, I will add that insight. We've had just over one hundred. Charging sessions so far.
Great, thank you. Kevin, did you have any questions?
Thanks Judy, no, no, not on this. I mean, I think my questions are more around the screening and, and kind of the lighting and some more logistical questions, but I think those all were kind of for you or any questions.
I was going to open up to the public at this point to see if anybody else had any questions. And I see Mr. McElany.
Thank you. Andy McElany, twenty-six Myers Farm Road. Are there going to be public charging stations at the new? Fire and police public service facility?
We have been talking with them about that. I don't believe that they have any existing applications for charging stations in place, but I, I think long term. There is an expectation that there will be some sort of charging there. Tom, I don't know if you want to. Speak to that more. There aren't existing plans to say exactly what they're going to have, but I, I do know there's interest.
Yeah, and we, we did look at that location as a possib- possibility on this round of funding. But the, the grants required the stations to be installed within two years, so given. That they don't put a shovel in the ground over there, that they wouldn't be a, a location that would be qualified for this grant.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No, but so, thank you Brianna, thank you Tom. So the planning board. In looking at this, has. For the special permit A three. The parking, well, let's talk about the waivers. So the, for the special permit A three, this lot is. Governed by section five A two, which does not allow. Reserve parking spaces for any person tenant activity or purpose. So you can't say it's for this use only. In this case, EV charging only does do that. And so we would have to waive that particular requirement of the bylaw. Our staff points out that we don't have a particular, uh, an EV charging specific. Bylaw right now, and so, um, once we do. This probably would solve this issue of having to grant a waiver for that specificity of use. The other. Waiver requested is for site plan review, but. But we will conduct site plan review for the reasons that Kevin just cited about. Screening and lighting for that, so. The. For site plan review. There is, well, we could go through it, but I think it's basically, we could talk about the landscape plan. And as a condition, Mike, is that written into the conditions? No.
We can certainly add it if the board would like to see additional screening. I would just suggest maybe specifying what type of screening you'd like to see. Whether it's, you know, natural plantings or. I, I would recommend maybe like arbivites or some sort of natural planting. If you'd like additional screening, but that's. You know, I guess something in agreement between the board and the applicant.
There, yes, there are a number of evergreens on the site and I was thinking maybe just using whatever evergreen there is now and just adding a couple.
Does that sound reasonable, Brianna?
I, I believe so. We actually did add some vegetation at the Station Street. Site before, but that's because there were existing bushes that had been disturbed, so we had replanted some. I don't know if, I, I don't think we're disturbing any vegetation, but I, since, if, if that's something that the board would want, we could add that. Tom, I think. Is, that's fine.
Yeah, no, we, we wouldn't have an issue with adding some arbivites or whatever.
You don't have to landscape the whole island there, but, but, you know, a couple of arbivite.
Yeah, yeah, that wouldn't be a problem.
Just distract the eye from the, for the passer. Driving by would be great. Although I would, I would think people passing by would want to know that it was there so that they could use it.
Typically, we'll put a sign out in the street someplace with the, you know, an arrow into the parking lot with the, you know, EV charger.
Yeah, okay. So that would be one condition that we would add is. That there will be arbivite added to screen the charging station from the street. You said that there was no additional lighting and this mechanism is not. Lit. Is that right?
No, and I, I think there's some existing street light, lighting that hopefully would cast enough light for someone to be able to use the station at any hour. But we, we haven't looked at adding any additional lights or anything.
Yeah, and they, I believe they do have an LED screen on them, so there would be some. Lighting from the, the screen.
But it wouldn't illuminate anything.
No, no.
Kind of the immediate area, okay. And there will be a, a pole. With above-ground wires, is that right?
Yes, we'll be installing a, a three-phase transformer bank on the opposite side of the street and running. Wire, you know, cable from that side of the street to a new pole. Beside the charging station. And there'll be a riser on that pole that'll come up and for the feed for the charging station.
Okay, and I believe that. That as long as the board, you know, doesn't have any questions about that. That is part of a site plan review and can be. And can, oh, wait, Kevin, Mike Silvero, are you saying that we have to waive? Design and performance standards to, to allow the above-ground wire?
Yes, yep.
Okay, and is that? Okay, so.
That would be included in your proposed findings.
In the waiver?
Your findings.
Right, okay, perfect. So if. There are no other questions, I will go through and read the findings. And then we'll move to the motion.
One quick question Judy, if I could. I'm, I'm looking at the pole and the overhead. Is there going to be a streetlight on the pole to light this area of the parking lot? Was that what you were referring to, Brianna?
Yeah, if we were going to add lighting, it would probably be on the pole itself. But we, we don't have a plan to add any lighting.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that, okay.
Okay, so for the special permit A three, which is the parking determination. The planning board finds A, that the parking is sufficient in quantity to meet the needs of the proposed project. And the installation of the EV charging station and reduction of one space will not greatly impact the number of spaces available to visitors. B, that pedestrian access and circulation is unchanged and has been provided for. C, new driveways, driveways have not changed at all, entrances, site distances, there's been no change. D, that the dedication of one parking space for EV charging only and one space for an access lane. Will not, will minimally affect the remaining ninety-eight available parking on site. And this proposed project will not result in or worsen traffic problems. And finally, the granting of relief is consistent with stated goals of the bylaw, including the prevention of pollution of the environment. The proposed parking space will not increase the likelihood of access of an accident or access and circulation within the site. So I would entertain a motion, given those findings, that the planning board moved. To grant the application of Hingham Municipal Light Plant for modification of the special permit A two. Parking determination originally issued February one, two thousand six. And a special permit A three parking determination with a waiver under section five A of the zoning bylaw. To install an electric vehicle charging station at Lynchfield. Two twenty-six Beale Street in the official and open space district, subject to the following conditions. First, the recording of the decision, the applicant shall file a certified copy of this decision, the registry of deeds and provide evidence of such recording. With the application for a building permit. Second, this decision is contingent upon the applicant obtaining a license from the town for installation, operation and maintenance of the EV charging station. Operation may only continue so long as such license remains in full force and effect. Third, all ongoing conditions of the special permit A two decision of the zoning board shall remain in full force. And effect unless otherwise modified by this permit. Is there a motion?
Just one quick question Judy, sorry, I'm a little tired, so I'm a little slow tonight. The, just one quick question, if there's a handicap. Handicap person parking in, had charging their car, that's in that space. The diagonal hatches are to provide access for wheelchairs to a van on the side of that vehicle, I think. How does it, how does the signage work if somebody's using the charging station and they're not, they don't have a handicap placard? They just park there?
That question is for you Brianna.
Yes, you, you can, anyone can use the, the station as long as they have an electric vehicle. They don't have to, it, the station will be ADA accessible and it, it will be compliant, so that if. You know, so that anyone can use that station, but it is not required that you have a handicap sticker or anything like that, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks, appreciate it.
So is there a motion for that special permit A three? Uh, thank you Gary, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks Gordon, all those in favor, we'll start with Kevin. Gary?
Hi.
Gordon?
Hi.
Rita?
Hi.
And I am a I as well. And now we move to the special, to the. All these S's, site plan review findings. Are A, that the proposed development will not adversely affect the health, safety and welfare of the prospective occupants, the occupants of neighboring properties. And users of the adjoining streets or highways and the welfare of the town generally. And B, the proposed development meets all applicable design and performance standards. With the exception of one I six H requiring underground wires. It is impractical to meet the standard and a waiver of such standard will not adversely impact the interests. Set forth in subsection seven A. So I would entertain a motion, given those findings, that the planning board grant the application of the Hingham Municipal Light Plant. For site plan approval under section one I of the zoning bylaw with a waiver of the submittal requirements. Under section one I five E G H I N J. Related to a zoning analysis, a landscape plan, a tree protection and mitigation plan. Grading and drainage plan and a construction schedule. To install an electric vehicle charging station at Lynchfield two twenty-six Beale Street in the official and open space district. Subject to the following conditions. First, the applicant should file a certified copy of this decision in the registry of deeds and provide evidence of such recording with the application for a building permit. And second. Mike, do you have something written about?
I do, yes. So the second would be plan revisions. The applicant shall revise plans to provide additional screening of the charging station on Beale Street consisting of our providing trees. Said plan shall be provided to the community planning department prior to issuance of the building permit.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you Rita, is there a second? Thanks Kevin, all those in favor, Gordon?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Rita?
Hi.
Hi.
And I am a I as well. Thank you, Hingham Municipal Light Plant, thank you Brianna, thank you Tom. Good luck. The next item on our agenda is one oh two Downer Avenue. Matthew and Stacy Corson filed an application for site plan review under section one I of the zoning bylaw and such other relief as necessary. To raise and rebuild a single-family dwelling and make other improvements, including an in-ground swimming pool. Purview's driveway landscaping and hardscaping at. One oh two Downer Avenue in Residence District A. We have received a site plan review application and. All associated plans, construction, schedule, site plan and peer review comments. Which are all found on the planning board's. Website. Is there somebody here who would like to make a brief presentation for the applicant?
Ah, yes, Rick Grady from Grady Consulting. Also on the call are the applicants Matt and Stacy Corson, their builder Stephen Linsky and their architect Bill Lee. So if you have any questions for them, they are available as well. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes, please do.
There we go. This is sheet one of our six sheets, plan set for the site drawings for the site plan approval. The lead sheet is depicting the proposed home. Porch on the front with the set of steps coming down to a Keystone driveway, circular lawn down our avenue here. The garage is on the right-hand side of the property here with the side entry on the garage. Proposed driveway located as shown in this area here. They're proposing a covered deck on the rear of the property and a pool in the back here as well. I can also see the fencing surrounding the pool in this area here. We've also included a building height calculation along with the front elevation of the architectural plan. Demonstrating compliance for the building height for zoning purposes. Zoning data on the plan over on the left-hand side as well. This is an existing house for this home where there is a hundred and thirty point eight six feet of frontage and a lot area of eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-three square feet. We've also provided a detailed existing conditions plan on sheet two depicting down or up on the bottom part of the sheet here. The existing home in the crosshatched area here, existing depth to the home. There is visible ledge outcropping to the rear of the property right here. Sheet three of the design set gets into additional detail, which I can zoom in here for you. Detailed grading for the proposed home and the associated site work. To, I'm sorry, I'm going to put my headphones on here. I'm getting a lot of background noise here. Sorry about that. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
So I mentioned the proposed driveway on the right-hand side here. We are proposing a trench drain at the end of the driveway near the front property line to Downer Avenue. That trench drain will be routed to an infiltration system depicted in this area here. That same infiltration system will also pick up the roof drains from the front of the home. In the back of the home, we're connecting roof drains to another infiltration system located right here between the house and the pool area. We conducted soils testing on site today with the board's review consultant, Pat Brennan. Soils testing in the back was as expected with a sandy loam soil, which we used for an infiltration rate on the drainage design. The front system, we actually found a sandy material, which was actually a little bit more pervious than we had used. So if anything, it's just slightly oversized based on the soil that we observed. We are making some minor edits to the plan for elevations. We need to raise these drainage systems approximately six to nine inches to provide separation to groundwater that was encountered during the testing today. So we are working on those edits and we really should have those ready by sometime tomorrow. They're not going to result in anything too significant as far as changes to grading. Like I said, roughly a half a foot higher in elevation. We are proposing a silt sock for erosion control along this left-hand property line and to the rear of the property. The general grades for the property are lowest in the back here at elevation eight. Up by the street, we're about elevation twelve. And at the top of the ledge here, we're at about elevation eighteen. So it's a gently sloped lot, nothing crazy as far as grades go. We are showing proposed grading to tie all of the new home into existing grades. The drainage calculations demonstrate that there will not be an increase for runoff for the two, the ten, the twenty-five, or the one hundred-year storm event. We have been working with Pat Brennan to, to address his review comments and believe that we've addressed the majority of them. Just have to update the drainage testing on the plan as I mentioned a few minutes ago. We also had our landscape architect provide a landscape design on sheet four of the plan set. I'm sorry, sheet five, sheet four is our tributary areas for pre-development and post-development for where these areas are draining to both existing and proposed. So sheet five actually is the landscape detail by our landscape architect. It is pretty well planted with a lot of plantings called for in front of the home. I believe a total of six shade trees are proposed. And a detailed planting schedule is also included on this sheet as well. The final sheet of the plan set is primarily drainage-related details. Details of the precast concrete infiltrators for the roof drains. Typical sewer trench detail. We will be reconnecting to town sewer and town water. We are proposing a Cape Cod berm on the right-hand side of the proposed driveway to make sure any runoff will be contained on site and not allowed to spill over onto the neighboring property. And unless any of the other folks, the builder or the architect or the owners have anything to add, I'd be glad to turn this over for questions to the board.
Thank you so much. That's very thorough and I kind of was following along with Pat Brennan's last letter to the board. Indeed showing that the issues have been addressed. And one proposed one recommended condition on proposed lighting. So thank you for that. Does anybody on the board have specific questions for the applicant or his team?
I did, Judy, unless somebody else wants to go first. Just a couple of questions, a couple of questions I was following and appreciate that the test holes were done and observed by Pat Brennan today, which is good. The, you'll have to raise the bottom of the subsurface drainage system, what, six inches? Will the tops of these have to be raised? And or will there any, any grades by the house be changed or is it all done on the below-grade change?
So the one near the driveway is done primarily below grade. The one by the back of the house in this area here, I should switch to the right sheet here for you. That's got to come up approximately six inches around this pool area. So we will be proposing to raid the grade in the backyard approximately six inches.
Okay, is there any in the pool area in the backyard where we're near the ledge, is there any blasting required for this project?
I'm not sure whether they're, they probably will need to do some blasting. I don't know the extent of it.
Would that be done with a mat or would it be done by just basically hammering?
Oops, sorry, went the wrong direction on my zoom here. We'd be attempting to do the hammering first, and if not successful, then it would be a mat situation.
I'm just wondering if, I know you have to notify the fire department, but would there be a plan to notify the butters and plenty of advance notice so they're understand what's going on?
Yes, that would be standard procedure and certainly an acceptable condition.
Okay. Is the, the driveway is very close to the lot line in the winter time when there's plowing and there's salt. Is the setback sufficient from the lot line and or is the Cape Cod berm sufficient to keep salt and snow off the butters property?
Yes, that was the intent of the Cape Cod berm, just to make sure that nothing was directed towards the neighbor's property. It will be retained on site. As far as snow removal, they would be piling it to the left of the driveway here. And they would have to push the majority of it back behind the driveway in this area here.
Okay. The, the other question I had was in terms of the new house design. Are there sustainable features planned in the house, you know, energy code, insulation parameters, things like that? Efficiency parameters planned for the design of the house?
I'm sure there are. Bill, would you like to address that? I think you might be on mute.
Yes, this is Billy and some of the things that we've incorporated into the house would be a high-efficiency windows, extra insulation. You know, we meet Rescheck and also in towns that subscribe to the hers raining system. We've actually designed, you know, for that purpose as well. So we tried to keep the, the energy efficiency, you know, as high as possible for this particular house.
Have you investigated any heat pump technologies or carbon-free technologies going away from gas and oil that the new construction might, might avail itself to?
There was some discussion on that and I, I think that's, you know, still open for, you know, discussion as far as do you like, you know, talk with the homeowners and so forth.
Yeah, just ask for information only, just as I'm on the climate action planning committee and we talk a lot about these issues all the time. The other question I had was, I noticed on the plan, you've got the zoning clarifications there for overhangs. Is that because there are decks on the left side of the plan? I was just curious why that note's there. Are the decks overhangs?
It, it's more because we put it on there for general standard procedure these days. Because we've gone to some jobs where there's large overhangs after we go back to do final as-bilts and would rather put it up there out front.
Great, thanks. Those are all my comments.
Gordon, Kevin, Rita.
Judy, my other questions are on kind of just scale, character in the neighborhood. We don't have any kind of framing for what this looks like relative to the neighbor's property and the rest of the properties in the street. You know, I'm fairly familiar down our avenue, but we want to see some of that in light of kind of some of the new residential buildings we're looking at. We keep on thinking about that topically and, you know, one of our obligations is to make sure it puts in the scale and character of the town, of the street.
Yeah. I actually drove that street today and just on this, in my humble opinion, it looks like it would fit into that street, but does, does anybody want to weigh in on that? I do know that they're, they're compliant with all of the setback requirements, is that correct?
I don't really, I don't really know the context duty there, so I was just wondering, is there any kind of an aerial or something that might show that?
Show what?
The, the massing, what Kevin's talking about, you know, kind of the perspective, would there be any? Would the applicant have any?
You did show us an elevation, right? Mr. Grady?
We did, yes.
Can you pull up that screen, please?
Sure. All right, one second, I'm almost there. And actually, I do have the architects' plans up here as well that I could show as well here.
So Rick or Bill, what's the square footage, total square footage?
The footprint is a little over twenty-four hundred square feet for the main house, twenty-four hundred and thirty-two square feet on the main house with a two-hundred-and-six-foot square foot porch and a two-hundred-and-three-square-foot covered deck. So a total kind of roof footprint's twenty-eight hundred and forty-one square feet.
I'll ask it a little bit different. From a living area square footage perspective. That's generally how we kind of look at the scale and I, there are a number of homes on the other side of Downer Avenue and adjacent to it, Judy, which is, I think, what you saw, that have fairly recently been rebuilt, right? There are some, you know, this, this is what's there now is a relatively small home compared to many of the homes around it at this point, I would say.
The proposed home is actually going to be thirty-seven hundred and fifty-eight square feet for a living, you know, finished space and then another eight eighty for the garage.
Yep.
Does that satisfy your interest, Kevin, the thirty-seven fifty-eight in finished space?
Yeah, I know, it does. And I'm familiar with this stretch of road as well for the most part. I may not drive it as much as I used to, but I was just looking at Google Maps earlier today, trying to get a sensitive, but I think maybe it's a general matter if you back against the submit some of that kind of scaling and reference for us, because I think it's pretty pertinent to our evaluation. But I think there's a house across the street that looks similar sized, almost directly across the street.
That's correct. Yeah, I've been up and down, you know, Downer. And, you know, this is style right after, you know, the coastal Shingo style, you know, notion. And there's several great examples of, you know, that type of style along that stretch. You know, that we tried to, you know, emulate. So it's not, you know, out of character in my view. It's, you know, it's going to fit right in.
Yeah.
And Mr. Grady, what about trees in the tree yard? I don't, it doesn't look like there's.
There are no trees, from what I read, there are no trees supposed to be removed. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, there's a few trees around the perimeter that we're able to retain, but it's primarily grass lot.
Okay. Does anybody, is anybody here from the public who would like to ask a question or make an observation about this project? Do I see a hand raised? Sir, please identify yourself and your address.
Sure, Warren Brini, one oh three Downer Avenue, directly across the street. And I don't want to seem adverse to the project. I just have a couple of questions as it relates to protection of, I guess, my property and the surrounding ones.
Please go ahead.
The first one was on the catch basins, and I know you explained that they had to be raised due to the groundwater level. What is done to, I guess, after this is in effect, to make sure that the groundwater level in the surrounding area isn't impacted?
Mike, I guess, Silvera, you know, the building commissioner goes out. One of our conditions is that the has-been built plans are submitted and verifies that the project is working as designed.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, Mike.
I was just going to say, single-family homes are, are technically exempt from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Standards, but most of the projects that we see come through do actually comply with all those standards. The building commissioner and the building department in general, they review all of these plans prior to issuing building permits and they always make sure that stormwater from someone's property stays on their property or their plans show that it'll make sure that that happens. We also have a peer review engineer who looks at the stormwater system and calculations to ensure that whatever is being proposed is adequate for whatever additional previous surface or materials is being added to the site.
Okay, and I actually, I mean, my question came from, I think, you know, our groundwater levels fairly high in this area to begin with. So that was more of my question, more than the runoff was sort of the ground level.
Okay.
The water level.
Yeah, I, I would actually invite the, the applicant or our peer review engineer to speak to that. I apologize, I'm not privy to the, to stormwater with respect to the groundwater. That's a little bit beyond my expertise.
Yeah, what we found as far as groundwater elevations go is in the test hole near the front of the property, we had groundwater about forty-two inches below the surface. So yes, fairly high. In the back area, we had approximately thirteen inches below the surface. So again, fairly high there. The way the stormwater calculations work is we have to identify the tributary areas, basically determine where get to the right sheet here for you. Where water may be leaving the site today. See if I can zoom out just a touch. And so right now you can see these blue squares that we have on here. Basically, anything within this area here is following the contours and being diverted kind of to the west here. Anything in the subcat two here is being directed to the northeast. Anything in subcat three here is being directed towards Downer Avenue in the southeast. And then for the proposed condition, we have to look at those same points of analysis. And so we're broken up into a number of different subcatchment areas here, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. And for each of those, we have to compare what's leaving the site for the proposed condition to the existing condition. And the way, way we attenuate that increased runoff for any additional pavement, any additional roof is through means such as the drywall systems that are proposed. So we infiltrate as much as we can into the ground. And then what's allowed to leave the site can't exceed what is existing. So as far as protections to Downer Avenue itself, the trench drain across the driveway is an important component that will capture anything coming from the new driveway, so it won't increase any runoff to Downer Avenue. We are, we do have to maintain two-foot of groundwater separation for these infiltration drywells. So that provides the protection that we need to make sure that they're actually functioning and not being inundated by groundwater. Um, and I'm sorry, that turned out to be a lot longer explanation than I was anticipating, so.
No, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yeah, the visual is very helpful. Anything else?
Uh, my other question was on uh blasting, um, because the original, I know someone mentioned before there is ledge in the back, the existing house sits on ledge, at least a portion of it comes out from under it. Um, so uh again, if there is blasting, um, what that notification is to neighbors. Uh, just to make sure that we're aware and prepared for that.
Um, sure, I.
I can speak to that if you'd like.
Oh, Pat's here.
Yeah, Pat Brennan, um, the boards consultant engineer. Um, so if they need to do any blasting, they need to get a permit through the fire department. And part of that permitting process is that they have to do um, a, it's called a pre blast survey. Any property within two hundred and fifty feet of this property needs to be surveyed. Um, and what they do is they come around, they knock on your door, they they'll give you notice first. And what what they'd like to do is get into your house, see the inside of the basement. See if there's any cracks, they document, they photo document everything, they they typically video everything. So that they have a an understanding of what the condition of all the surrounding structures are at this point in time. Um, and then if there's an issue that somebody has a claim afterward, what they do is they compare what they had for their pre last survey versus whatever the condition of say, say a crack formed in your foundation um due to the blasting, they'd be able to tell that because it wasn't there during the pre blast survey. So that's how that is handled and it's all um, it's all mass law on on how um, you know, how the notifications are done, how the survey is done and the limits of that survey. Like I said, the state law is two hundred and fifty foot uh radius around the property. Um, sometimes have even larger radius radiate than that. Um, but that's two hundred and fifty feet, you're well within that where with where you are.
Okay. No, thank you. Um, those were my two questions. Um, and again, I I want to make sure, you know, I'm not adverse to the project. I I just had some questions about how it impacted my property.
That's why we hold the hearing. So thank you for coming and um I hope your questions were answered and our staff is always uh available by phone should you have questions afterwards. Um, Rita.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to ask Pat, um, Pat Brennan. I know they did the test pits today and what was, you know, what was the results of the test pits today?
Um, sure, um, a- as Rick had mentioned, uh, the the groundwater was a little bit higher than they expected. Um, the test pit that they did um to the left rear of the of the existing house, um. The the soil material um was what they had assumed. Um, the test pit next to the driveway on the kind of the front right of the house um had better soils, it was sandier, more gravel, um soils better for infiltration, so. Um, you know, the the size of the systems will not increase. Basically, all they have to do is lift them up. Um, and to do that, they may, they may need to change the types of chambers they have to, you know, maybe have a lower profile if need be. Um, but that's the only change really is lifting those systems up to to provide that two feet of separation like Rick had mentioned.
Okay. Thanks, Pat. Um, are there any other questions from anybody? Yes, sir, please identify your name and address.
I'm David Littlefield and I live at ninety eight Downer Avenue. It's a direct neighbor to the uh new building, the property. And I just, in regard to the water situation, uh, the previous owner um of the property at one time told me that there was actually an aquifer that ran between my property and the uh Corson's property. And I didn't, I'm, I'm not aware that there is such an aquifer there, but I just wondered if anybody had any information regarding that.
Mr. Grady, Mr. Brennan?
Yeah, yeah, so, um. I'm not sure about aquifer, but as as Rick had mentioned, the the test pit on that side of the house, the groundwater, and it was down in the in the backyard there where it's it's fairly low and it goes. The groundwater was only just over a foot below grade, so it it is a high groundwater area um over there. And, you know, based on what the grade level is there versus the test that we did on the other side, when you when you actually take the surface elevation and the depth that we found, the groundwater is almost the exact same right across the site, the level of it, so. Um, you know, it's a pretty good indication of of where that water table is um with those two test bits we did tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Gordon.
Just a very quick, just informational question, Pat, because again, I'm even less sophisticated than Michael on some of these things. Um, how how do you get two feet of separation if the groundwater is thirteen inches down?
Well, that and and if Rick could pull up uh maybe the grade, the proposed grading plan, um. So that would be where that smaller system is in the backyard, um, right there. You can see the proposed grade right at the back of the house there is fourteen. Um, that existing contour that runs kind of up and down on the plan right through that system is elevation ten, so they're bringing that area.
So they're they're bringing in fill that, right, to 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 raise that whole area back there to allow for that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. I I believe we are ready to move forward um with this and um I will proceed if you have any questions, members of the board, just say, so as um as I read through this, please. So um, the planning board um first makes some findings and the two findings I would propose are that uh A, the proposed development as conditioned by the approval will not adversely affect the health, safety and welfare of the prospective occupants, the occupants of neighboring properties and users of the adjoining streets or highways and the welfare of the town generally. And B, that the proposed development meets all applicable design and performance standards. So what we have reviewed tonight and through our peer review process are uh the design and performance standards uh put forth in our site plan review um section of the zoning bylaw. Um, so that said, uh, I would entertain a motion that the planning board grant the application of Matthew and Stacy Corson for site plan approval under section one I of the zoning bylaw to raise and rebuild a single family dwelling and make other improvements, including an in-ground swimming pool, pervious driveway, landscaping and hardscaping at one oh two Downer Ave in Residence District A, subject to the following conditions. First, the applicant shall file a certified copy of this decision in the registry of deeds and provide evidence of such reporting with the application for a building permit. Second, proposed outdoor lighting shall be consistent with that of a single family home and shall not project onto abutting properties greater than the zero point two five foot candle limit.
Judy?
Yes.
I apologize, um, this, uh, if the board would like this, um, maybe a complete to put in an additional condition for plan revisions.
Oh, right.
For the stormwater system, I'm happy to read that.
Um. And so that would be number four or three?
Number three.
Okay, please.
It would be the new number three, um, plan revisions. The applicant shall revise plans to reflect the revised stormwater system in grades following a positive report from the board's peer review engineer. Revised plans shall be provided to the community planning department prior to issuance of a building permit.
Thank you. And so now number four is the pre-construction review meeting? Sorry?
Yes.
Okay, um, which will, with the inspection of the erosion control installation and mark limits of clearing shall be required before issuance of a building permit. Number five, um, has to do with limits of work during clearing and or construction activities, the marked limit of work shall be maintained until all construction work is completed and the site is cleaned up. All vegetation beyond the limit of work shall be retained in an undisturbed state and no stockpiling of topsoil or storage of fills, materials or equipment may occur within the protected area. Without limiting the foregoing, protected trees shall be retained to be retained shall be surrounded by protect temporary protective fencing or other appropriate measures before any clearing or grading occurs and maintained until all construction work is completed and the site is cleaned up. Protective barriers shall be large enough to encompass the critical root zone of all protected trees to be preserved. Inspection of the protective barriers shall be required before issuance of a building permit. Six, all construction vehicles shall be parked on site. No construction vehicle shall enter the premises before seven AM on any given construction day. Seven, inspections shall be required during construction and prioritizations of a certificate of occupancy of all elements of the project related to or affecting erosion control limits of work and the approved drainage and stormwater system installed for the project. The planning board may require at the applicant's expense the establishment of a consultant fee account pursuant to master general laws, chapter forty four, section fifty three G to fund the cost of such inspections. Eight, upon project completion, an as-built plan must be submitted to the building commissioner prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Excuse me?
It it might be a little.
Somebody should be muting, I think. And in no event later than two years after the completion of construction, in addition to such other requirements as are imposed by the building commissioner, the as-built plan must demonstrate substantial conformance with the stormwater system design and performance standards of the approved pro- project plans. Nine, each protected tree retained shall be maintained in good health for a period of no less than twenty four months from the date of final inspection or issuance of a certificate of occupancy, if applicable. Should such trees die or be removed within such twenty four month period, the owner of the property shall be required to replace such tree with a tree consistent with the requirements within nine months from the death or removal of such protected tree. I would just add a number ten that says uh in case blasting is required on the site, uh, the butters, you know, the affected butters will be notified um and uh informed of applicable procedures. Does that make sense, Michael? Yeah. Um. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Gary. Is there a second? Thank you, Kevin. Um, all those in favor will start with Rita.
Hi.
Gary.
Hi.
Gordon.
Hi.
Kevin.
Bye.
And I am an I as well. Uh, thank you all for your time, interest, energy and good luck.
Good luck, good luck.
Have a good night. The next item on our agenda is fifty five South Street. Charlene and Ruben Levy submitted applications to modify special permit A three parking determination originally issued September twenty one two thousand sixteen under section three G seven eight four and five A in a waiver of site plan review under section one I nine, not one I of the zoning bylaw to fulfill parking requirements for the dwelling units in an existing commercial residential building in the business A district and down Angler overlay district through offsite spaces designated in the resident um parking program. We have received an application and background material on this and welcome the applicant to make a brief presentation of what they are uh looking to accomplish.
Hmm.
I have been.
I don't.
We have been to a bit of a funny situation here.
Yep, um, for the second time in a row, actually, uh, because if you recall, this happened at the initial hearing, um.
We could get a complex.
Yeah, we we have had multiple conversations with the applicant um about the schedule, about um the information that the board was interested in seeing, um. But I do believe they there may have been some, um, you know, family issues that they were dealing with at at the time of the initial hearing. I am unclear if those continue, but it appears that your site plan review uh deadline anyways is next week and.
It's Saturday, actually.
This week, um.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so we're sort of out of time, um. And you may need to.
Would say that um the discussion that I would like to have is whether we uh should deny site plan review.
You could deny it, or I would say that staff at least is recommending that you waive site plan review. Um, really, the crux of this decision is related to your special permit application. Um, and the only reason site plan review was triggered is because of the special permit A three. Um, so for this evening's purposes, just so you're meeting a decision deadline. And if you're feeling generous, um, you potentially could vote to waive site plan review because there are no changes to the site or any offsite um improvements and take up the real substance of the request um through the special permit uh hearing at a future hearing date uh before the March deadline.
Does anybody have any uh uh thoughts that support what um Emily is saying that we waive um site plan review and uh here the site, the special permit A three application at a later date? Somebody who wants to speak in favor of that?
I mean, it seems um, it seems like a reasonable position because we're meeting our deadline criteria. But the question I have, there isn't anything in the site plan review that would impact the A three or there isn't anything, I should say, in the A three special permit review that would impact the site plan review? Are they completely independent of one another?
It it oddly enough, they seem to be in this particular case because they're simply requesting that you allow um the currently approved offsite parking on private property to be relocated to existing parking spaces on public property. Um, so there are no changes physically to the site itself. Um, and um, in fact, they're not proposing any changes to, you know, obviously the public right of way on South Street um that they hope to utilize for their parking requirements.
So in the in the current permit, they don't have any dedicated parking near the building. So what they're proposing to do is uh they have designated parking for the for the apartments, right?
They they do presently um on another property on South Street that's privately owned for overnight only. And they're hoping to replace that with overnight only parking um through a resident parking program that the select board created a number of years ago on South Street.
So, okay. Is is the um, just just for information, are the are the provisions of that um the downtown overlay district parking, are they delineated in a place where I could read them?
Yeah.
I always get confused when we talk about this.
Yeah, they they have been incorporated into the traffic rules and regulations through a vote um by the select board. If it's not already on the website, we'll make sure it's there. Um, and we can provide you with like a an aerial image of where the spaces are located. Um, they're on the north side of the one-way stretch of South Street.
I see. And so this 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 building, because it doesn't have any on-site parking, then had to do a allocation on private property, we're now in the public parking area. Other residential projects downtown, because they have parking on site, they wouldn't, they don't have any use of parking that's offsite, right?
Um, there is one other property that this board um allowed to utilize an overnight resident parking program offered through the town, except for it's in the Station Street parking lot. It was sixteen B North Street. Um, but but that's the only one that's formally using um the resident parking program created by the town.
So does does this create a, I guess the other question was, does this create a precedent that all the projects would follow, or is this all on an individual basis?
Well, I mean, every project I'd argue um is, you know, reviewed on a case per case basis, but one of the options in the downtown overlay district um section of the bylaw three G is that you could have, you can have offsite parking for the residential units within a commercial residential building, you know, if allowed by this board. Um, either through leased parking of private spaces offsite within five hundred feet or through a publicly created resident parking program.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
I'd like to take a different tack on this conversation. Um, I've been on this board for nearly sixteen years. And I can't think of one time And I can't think of one time. When an applicant just didn't show up, you know, without sending a text. Coming ten minutes late and kind of explaining themselves, um. And I know this is the only time that an applicant. Simply hasn't shown up twice. Um, to me, it indicates a lack of interest in this process, and if the applicant isn't interested in the process, I'm not interested in the process either. So that's where I stand on this and would like to hear anybody who would disagree with that.
I'll, I'll ditto your, your comment, Judy.
I mean, are, are there extenuating circumstances that staff is aware of uh that, you know?
Yes.
I mean, Judy makes a good point, like.
Yeah.
Back, back to Gary's precedent setting, like.
Yeah.
You know, we don't want to reward and encourage bad behavior.
Um, I agree, uh, from, you know, the staff perspective, I'd say it puts us in an awkward position. Where we're doing research for particular applicants because they're failing to do it themselves. Um, and we're still hoping that the board can make well-informed decisions. Um, we did find out after the last hearing that there were extenuating circumstances. Involved family and involved family in another country. Um, so. Uh, you know, a- and to the extent that the site plan review hearing, which is the deadline that is most imminent. Um. You know, there, it, it probably would be defensible to waive that in the absence of any presentation from the applicant. Applicant, you can. Um, I think have a very direct conversation with the applicant at a future hearing. Related to the special permit request, um, or you could vote to deny it.
Yeah, let me ask it more directly. Were they expecting that we would, we would um follow your recommendation and just waive site plan review and so?
I, I can't say what they were expecting. Um, I, that certainly was not represented to them in any way. Um, yeah, and no. And, you know, and had suggested like if you weren't able to attend the last hearing, because again, we didn't find out about it until a day or two later. Um, you know, why they weren't there, uh, that they needed to inform us.
I guess the thing that concerns me is the fact that no, they, they didn't tell us in advance, so we kind of found out. At least the board members, we found out right now, you know, it's like it's.
And they are not unfamiliar with our.
Yeah.
So they know we have a meeting, we post it, they know it, we know it, everybody shows up, we talk, we move on.
It's not their first rodeo.
Judy, I, I'm with you. I'm, I think we've already some more time talking about this and they, they quite frankly deserved it in the, the no show twice. Um, Emily, Michael, how convenient is for you for us to deny this from your perspective? Cause that's what I care more about in, in this context. I'm annoyed, I mean, I'm annoyed, it's just lack of respect.
Yep, uh, no, thank you, Kevin, for asking the question. I mean, I would say it's more administrative work for the office in, you know, preparing a new legal ad. Preparing new butters notices. Um, and again, it's for something that at the end of the day is probably not meaningful with respect to the site plan review application. I'm not sure if the board is contemplating denying both applications tonight, even though you still have. You know, uh, six weeks left on your decision deadline for the special permit.
Emily, I'm just curious, did you speak to them this week?
Um, I've not talked to them today, no, not this week.
I mean, this, um, this week.
Um. Mike, would you say the last correspondence was probably like a week and a half ago, two weeks ago?
Um, yeah, at least that, uh, they have, they received the agenda, they received notification of the new. Um, of tonight's meeting, you know, the day after the last meeting.
Uh, Mike, you even confirmed with Charlene in person when she came into the office, her email address, so we know it's going to the correct. Um, place.
Yes.
But, but again, we don't know, you know, what's, what's going on.
In, in terms of processes, is it, is it, is because they didn't show up, is it uh? It's like an incomplete application, is it denial without prejudice or with prejudice, without prejudice, right? It's just.
Uh, yeah, you just, you, you just be, I guess, denying it. Nobody's withdrawing anything, so you can't act without prejudice. Um, I mean, it'd be like an A and R, let's say, um, cause site plan review is more or less, you know, non-discretionary and people need the standards. Um, if, if somebody doesn't show up, you still have to act within the twenty-one days. And I, I don't think you'd act to deny something that met. The, you know, requirements under the statute.
But it puts us in a bad position.
It does, yep, I agree, all of us.
Yeah, oh, it's.
There is a um provision under section one F, which is the, the planning board's powers essentially. Um, and, and the process for repetitive petitions, so if an application is, um, the board. Uh, acts unfavorably. Um. And it's essentially the applicant can't reapply for two years unless um the board allows it for others.
Because it's substantially different, yeah, not, not different, not, you know, sorry you didn't show up. Um, but their plan would have to be substantially different.
Um, I am still inclined to deny it because, as I said. Twice, it's just. It's, it's a waste of staff's time, has put all this energy into researching all of this. I am also concerned that this. Um, parking program isn't really fully. It's not robust, and so there's a lot of work that needs to happen for um. For the applicant, if we were to grant this, if they were here and we had discussion and we granted it, they would still have a, a lot of interactions with the town to go through. In order to get these resident um parking permits.
No, not a ton, Judy, I mean, just, and I can only speak to our experience with the sixteen B one, so since. We last spoke about the resident parking program years and years ago, because I know you were helping us out internally. Um, we have created a form that the town clerk um has, and so an applicant would go in. Fill out the form, they get the, you know, the parking permit. Um, and that has to be renewed annually for pretty much a nominal fee, I think, I think it's fifty dollars a year or somewhere thereabouts. Um, some things that the town probably does want to consider is um. Modifying again the traffic rules and regulations to specify that during like a, a snow emergency. That vehicles that are allowed to park um on South Street have to relocate to the Station Street lot. Um, so that, you know, we can, you know, maintain the roads and, and do snow removal. Um, so that's something that proactively the town is discussing, um, but otherwise the program, it's in place. Um. So.
So I just need to, I want to make sure I understood the last point that Michael was, was making. Um, if we deny their site plan review tonight. They cannot reapply for two years unless it is substantially different than the application that was before us.
That's how a repetitive petition works. Mike, are you certain that applies to site plan review and not just special permits, variances?
It's, it's just under, so one F is planning board, section one is the powers, and let's say plan review, special permits. Um, and the associate member, and then number two, it just says repetitive petitions. Um, it makes no mention of a specific type of application.
Yeah, so repetitive. It, it's from forty A, uh, uh, so it's a little bit unclear whether it applies to site plan review. I don't have. Experience with that um or the answer.
Cause, cause they will, they will lose their mind if that's the case.
Well, yeah, it, that would be a trickier one to defend, I guess.
Isn't that somewhat of us in accepting the application? Is it, or is that what you're suggesting, Emily? There might be some discretion there?
What, I'm sorry, Kevin.
Is there some discretion on our end to label something as repetitive? Is to make repetitive? I mean, I have no idea.
Uh, no, if you deny it. It, that is, if site plan review is covered under those provisions. Um, so if we protect, if you're gonna deny, let's wipe out the site plan review, although that's the one that, you know, has the impending deadline. If you were to vote to deny tonight that special permit request, they would be barred from returning to the planning board. Unless they first went through a repetitive petition application process with you, and the only way that you could say. Will open the gate and you can reapply is if that request is substantially different than the one that's before you right now. Um, I, I do know that's the case with special permits. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent confident about site plan approval.
But it, it sounds like there's a lot of work that would have to be done to this, so. It would probably have to be substantially different, or it would be, it's, it's incomplete now from what I'm hearing. I haven't seen it, but this is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, it's more the request as opposed to like, I, my understanding, but I, these are really, actually, we're oddly enough getting into more legal questions. Um, so I haven't reviewed a bunch of case law about repetitive petitions, but my understanding is it's about the substance of the request. Um, as, and so for like a variance, you know, instead of asking for a ten-foot variance, you're, you're. Um, improving what you had originally requested so that, you know, you only need, you know, a five feet of relief. Um, I don't, it, it's not necessarily about the formatting of the application per se.
Right, so I guess I come to, I come to the, I'm usually the one who wants to work everything out, um, but then I also. Paid a lot of bills today, and if I didn't pay those bills, I'd have all sorts of, you know, you know, pay things on time, do things on time, there are repercussions, right? And I couldn't go and say, hey, could you waive it? No. I don't, I don't want to have that to be the driver, but it just frustrates me that. Um, they're not showing up and they're not calling. I mean, it's worse that they're not calling and they're not showing up. It just seems to me. I would always call somebody if I couldn't make it, you know, if one of us couldn't make a planning board meeting, because whatever reason, sick or whatever business or conflict, we'd always call.
Especially if you just missed the last one, right? You, you'd be a little more insensitive to it, right?
Right, right, I, I don't get it, I guess. It sounds to me like we're being played, and I hope that isn't too strong, but.
Okay.
Um, Emily, have you ever done this before? No. Um, and, and honestly, I, I, I don't know that I recommend it. Um. It particularly, well, A, I'm.
Because we have the time.
You, you have the time on the special permit to deal with the substance of the application and we don't know. The reason for why they, they aren't here. So if it was for good cause and then. By default, they're barred from, you know, reapplying for the same request for two years. Um. You know, I think it would just put us kind of in a sticky spot, and I, and I a hundred percent agree that they've put you in a sticky spot. Um, already because you have to have this conversation.
Does this have to be decided in a meeting? Um, can it be a proxy?
Can we waive it with prejudice?
Right.
I don't think so. It's usually withdrawn with or without prejudice.
Um, can we extend the decision deadline, um?
Yeah, that's.
And just tell them that, yeah, they either agree to it and, I mean.
No, they, they have to agree to it, and if they're not here, we.
So the, so, the, the, the way to be customer friendly here. If we wanted to take that route, would be to waive site plan review. Even though they're not here to ask for it and to um. And to reschedule to a later date within the timeframe, the special permit A three.
Yep. And you can go.
And so we could just keep doing that, rescheduling.
Um, yeah, until what, March nineteenth, Mike?
Yeah.
Um.
So what's the meeting we have that's like, that's, so the, so March nineteenth?
Let me bring up our schedule. I, I would recommend, I mean, maybe extending it to the end of February or beginning of March.
What do you mean extending?
I'm, I'm sorry, continuing.
Oh, I would do it to March thirteenth if we have March nineteenth, you know, like just. So that if you don't come, there is no way to just keep doing this funny nonsense.
The only thing I'll add is, I was, and, you know, of, of course, you're, you folks are all welcome to chime in. I was hoping that uh we could get back on a bi-weekly schedule or try to beginning of March. Um, so we'd have the first week in March, which is March sixth, and then skip.
Oh, I thought it was vice versa, because we're gonna miss the twentieth for President's Day, so I presume we'll have February twenty-seven.
Yes.
Skip the sixth and then March thirteenth.
Problem.
I like that line, Mike, a lot.
I love it.
Always looking out for you.
Thank you, Mike. So I would continue this to, if, so I would either deny both or continue. The special permit to March thirteenth and waive the site plan review.
Um, Judy, we want to continue to the February twenty-seven only because if we actually have some of the things we want them to get back to us with, we might want to see those substantive changes. And if they don't show up on the twenty-seven, then we just deny it. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm not, you know, it just gives us a chance to get information that we might need.
Yeah, that makes sense, good sense. So what we're talking about is a three-strike rule rather than a two-strike rule. Two strikes now, we give them another strike, right?
Well, we've already spent like half an hour on these people.
Yeah.
They've spent no time on this, so. Um, as I, I, I'm, I could continue to any day, I just have lost patience. And the only reason I would continue it is because I don't want to put Emily and Mike in the situation where they have to listen to this.
Well, I'll make a motion to waive site plan review for. Uh.
Well, you have to make, uh, sorry, going, you have to make a, um, site plan review finding first.
All right, and Judy, I'm.
If we want to start with the site plan review. I have to go all the way to the bottom here. Uh, the finding is that the proposed modifications to the parking requirements under section three. G seven, eight, four, and five, A do not materially or adversely affect conditions governed by the site plan review design and performance standard set forth in section one. I have the zoning bylaw, as such, the project constitutes a minor modification of the site plan approval issued September twenty-one, twenty sixteen. And so I would entertain Gordon's motion uh to waive site plan review under section one, I. Of the bylaw to modify the site plan approval and connect, contact. In connection.
Action.
With a special permit A three originally issued September twenty-one, twenty sixteen under section one, I have the zoning bylaw to fulfill parking requirements for the dwelling units. And existing commercial residential building in the business A district and downtown Hingham overlay district through offsite spaces designated. In the resident parking permit program. Um. And I heard a second from Rita, so um, all those in favor will start with uh Gary.
Hi.
Gordon. Kevin. Rita.
And reluctantly, I also.
Exactly, I, um, so we have now waived uh. Site plan review and move to uh the special permit A three. Um, I would entertain a motion. That the planning board continue. The application of Charlene and Ruben Levy to modify special permit A three parking determination originally issued September twenty-one, twenty sixteen. Under section three G seven, eight, four, and five, A of the zoning bylaw to fulfill parking requirements for the dwelling units. In an existing commercial residential building in the business A district and downtown overlay district through offsite. Spaces designated in the resident parking permit program to Monday, February.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seventh at seven PM.
So moved.
Thank you, so uh Rita, and so I'm just writing into my calendar, um. Sorry about that, uh, all those in favor, Kevin?
Hi.
Rita.
Hi.
Gordon.
Hi.
Gary.
Hi.
And I am an I as well. I just would implore uh whoever does speak with the applicant to really. Um, mince no words and um and express. A deep desire on the board's behalf that they not only arrive on the designated hour, but they arrive prepared. With a lot of detail about, because the parking chart that's in the staff notes, thank you. Is five years old, and so they might need to do a little bit more, you know, substantiating and um. And without that substantiation, yeah, the, the, it, it. and without that substantiation, yeah, the, the, it, 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 yeah. Thank you, and I'm sorry to put you in that situation. So it's nine forty-five. Uh, do we have anything else on our agenda? No, okay, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Gary. Um, all those in favor will start with Rita.
I.
Gordon.
Hi.
Gary.
Hi.
Kevin. And I am an I as well.